Live from Burbank, the media capital of the world.
To participate in the general public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. For any scheduled public hearings, please call when prompted to speak if you want the comment to be part of the record. Speaking times will be determined by the total number of public comment cards and callers in the queue at the start of each public comment period. For one to twenty total speakers, each speaker will receive up to three minutes. For twenty-one to thirty-nine total speakers, each speaker will receive up to two minutes. And for forty-plus total speakers, each speaker will receive up to one minute. No additional comment cards or calls will be accepted once the public comment period begins.
Interpreters are available for assistance with in-person public comment. Please connect with them if you are in need of services. Hay servicios de interpretación disponibles para asistir con los comentarios públicos en persona. Por favor, habla con un intérprete si necesita estos servicios.
Yet et deum megnab annuntiune canum tarkmanici garicunec miacek tarkmanci hit oknutian hamash.
Good evening and welcome to a regular meeting of the Burbank City Council on Tuesday, November eighteenth, 2025. Thank you for joining us on what is not a rainy evening. So we're all very happy about that. And if you would all please join me for a moment of reflection. This moment is intended to begin our meeting with a positive and collective support for our beloved community. The city council welcomes everyone joining us this evening. We encourage you to take a moment to reflect on our community and the work we will be doing tonight. Although each one of us has our own unique reasons for being here, we are united in our passion for our wonderful city. As we pause, let us consider our individual contributions and what they mean to those around us. Let us find solace in knowing that by working together with a shared spirit of community and partnership, we will always act responsibly for the betterment of Burbank. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Ready? Begin. Here we had some very enthusiastic flag sluters over there. We heard you all loud and clear. Madam City Clerk, how are you this evening?
I'm terrific. How are you, Madam Mayor?
I'm doing great. Couldn't be better. Will you please call the room?
How's Michelle?
She's great.
She's four months.
Wow, it goes by so fast.
It goes by so fast.
Councilmember Anthony?
Here.
Councilmember Mullins?
Here.
Councilmember Rosati?
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Tagahashi?
Here.
And Mayor Perez?
I'm here, and the days are long, but the years are so short.
All right. Now, there will be four periods of public comment tonight. Members of the public may comment in person or by telephone during our general public comment period and must submit the yellow cards or call before the comment period begins. The first comment period is for general public comment on any matter concerning our city business and/or any agenda item. If you are here in person and you wish to speak during the general public comment, you should have submitted a yellow comment card to our wonderful city clerk. And if you would like to participate in the general public comment over the phone, please call us now at 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until the general comment period begins, at which time no additional calls will be taken. If you would like to participate in the public comment for the public hearing happening shortly, please call anytime between now and the beginning of that public hearing at that same number, 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in the queue until that public comment period begins, and no callers will be taken after that. Additional comment periods will be available following the reports to council this evening, and we have interpreters available. We have a Spanish interpreter. Apologies, we do not have Armenian interpretation tonight, but if you need Spanish interpretation, please see our interpreter. And if no one speaks them right here at the front, then I will let him go for the night. And if you can guess how many times I said the word "public" in that speech, then you get a prize at the end. I'm just kidding. All right. Tough crowd. All right, we have five announcements this evening.
Following our announcements for November eighteenth, 2025. From now through November twenty-ninth, adoption fees for all animals, big and small, are fifty percent off at the Burbank Animal Shelter. Visit the shelter to meet the animals in person or browse all available pets online at burbankanimalschow.org. Adopt today and help us get them home for the holidays. Kick off the holiday season at the Holiday in the Park. On Friday, November twenty-first, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m., experience the joy of live music, food trucks, kids' activities, photo opportunities with Santa and characters, a vintage car show, local vendors, and more festive fun. New features this year include a Burbank Bus Holiday Shuttle Service, ADA Designated Parking, and a sensory-friendly hour provided one hour before the event officially begins. Admission is free. For more event details, go to visitmagnolia park dot com. The downtown Burbank Winter Wine Walk and Street Fair returns Saturday, November twenty-second. San Fernando Boulevard from Magnolia to Angelino Avenue will be transformed into a festive wonderland featuring local wine tastings, live entertainment, a variety of artists and vendors, and a magical snowfall for all to enjoy. Tickets are available for purchase online at burbankwinterwinewalk dot com or at the door while supplies last. The Burbank City Clerk's Office is accepting applications for one vacancy on the Heritage Commission for an unexpired term ending July thirty-first, 2026. The deadline to apply is Monday, December eighth, at 5:00 p.m. If interested, please apply online at burbankca dot gov forward slash B C C application. As a reminder, any person appointed to fill a vacancy shall hold office for the remainder of the unexpired term. Persons appointed to serve unexpired terms must complete the term before applying to serve on another board, commission, or committee. For more information, please contact the Burbank City Clerk's Office at 818-238-5851 or email cityclerks@burbankca.gov. Join Little Squirt's Fire Safety Challenge. Hosted by the Burbank Fire Department, elementary and middle school students can learn about fire safety and emergency preparedness by completing a challenge checklist. Become a fire safety champion and claim your cool items from Fire Station Eleven by December nineteenth. For the challenge checklist and more information, visit burbankfire.us or call 818-238-3473. This concludes the announcements for this evening.
All right. Oh, we have a few presentations for all of you this evening, and we'll start with our first presentation, which is a little bit of bragging on the city's end, is a presentation of the League of California Cities 2025 Helen Putnam Award for Excellence for our Burbank Adaptive Sports Expo. At this time, I'm welcoming Ms. Jennifer Kwan, Regional Public Affairs Manager from the League of California Cities, and where is she? Marissa Garcia, our fearless leader, Parks and Recreation Director. Please join me at the podium. And Ms. Kwan, if you'd like to say a few words, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. It is a pleasure to be here to honor the city of Burbank. Every year, the League of California Cities honors cities throughout the state for outstanding and innovative efforts that better serve and respond to the needs in their communities with awards known as Helen Putnam Awards. Helen Putnam was the first female president of the League of California Cities. Like many councilmembers, she was a tremendous civic advocate and likewise appreciated efforts from councilmembers throughout the state. She was a mayor in Petaluma, a supervisor in Sonoma County, a schoolteacher, and a principal. In nineteen eighty-two, CalCities created and established the Helen Putnam Awards to honor cities throughout the state. The award recognizes excellent city programs that make communities better places for their residents to live and work. Honoraries have all made a unique contribution to their community, either that improve the quality of life, more efficiently deliver services and programs, or provide a new service that responds to a community need. Awards were given in twelve different categories and announced last month at our annual conference in Long Beach. City of Burbank received the Helen Putnam Award for their Adaptive Sports Expo, which celebrates inclusion with adaptive sports and activities fostering awareness, accessibility, and community through growing partnerships and participation. I know that you'll provide some specifics, but I want to mention some specific groups that should be honored in addition to the mayor, the council, and all the city staff involved. But special recognition should be given to the teams at the Triumph Foundation, SoCal Adaptive Sports, Angel City Sports, Burbank Tennis Center, Hertz Forsyte Foundation, Burbank Advisory Council on Disabilities. All of these groups should be recognized and applauded for their efforts on behalf of League of California Cities. Congratulations. Recognition is very much well-deserved.
It's a true honor to stand here today to be part of the acceptance of this award on behalf of the city and particular Parks and Recreation Department for the 2025 Helen Putnam Award of Excellence. This recognition celebrates innovation, leadership, and meaningful impact in local government. And for us in particular, in the city of Burbank and Parks and Recreation, it highlights a cause that's really near and dear to our hearts, which is inclusive recreation for all residents and community members. The Burbank Adaptive Sports Expo, also known as BASE, was launched in 2024 with a clear and powerful mission to break down barriers and build belonging through sports. In our first year, we, the event has grown in the last couple of years that we've been hosting it. Our very first year, we welcomed two hundred athletes and a thousand attendees. This last year, we welcomed two hundred and forty athletes and over three thousand attendees, offering access to more than eighteen adaptive sports, including wheelchair basketball, blind soccer, beep baseball, and paraphrasing, just to name a few. I want to take a moment to recognize the team in Parks and Recreation. In particular, we have three here. We have Diego Savio, who is Assistant Parks and Recreation Director, Noah Altman, Recreation Services Manager, and John McGinley, another Recreation Services Manager. And the rest of the team in Parks and Recreation, their passion, creativity, and tireless dedication have made BASE a model of inclusion, accessibility, and community impact. From planning this program and this event to hands-on support during the event, they have exemplified the very best of public service. In addition to some of our partners that were mentioned previously by Ms. Kwan, I also want to take a moment to thank the Leadership Burbank Class and the Office of Supervisor Barker, who, along with the other partners, their collaboration and their support have enabled us to expand our adaptive sports here in the city of Burbank. We offer creative year-round opportunities for our residents that truly empower them, and that's something that we all should be proud of. So on behalf of the City of Burbank Parks and Recreation Department, thank you, Jennifer Kwan, and the League of California Cities for this incredible honor. We are truly inspired to continue championing programs that make our community stronger, more inclusive, and much more unified. So thank you very much.
Yeah, let's see if y'all come up.
Let's give them one more round of applause. Thank you all, and thank you for coming up for the picture. Lord knows you all do amazing work in Parks and Rec. And on your hundredth year, just getting award and recognition after recognition, go Parks and Rec team. All right, our next presentation is one that is very near and dear to my heart. So our next presentation is the presentation of Certificates of Recognition to the winners of our Our Burbank 2025 Halloween Decorating Contest. If you all know me, I will say that Burbank is Halloween Town. We are obsessed with Halloween. We are one of the only places in California with a year-round Halloween store and plenty of other spooky stores. I was going to say, if you haven't seen it yet, we have a lovely mayor's show where we highlight some of those stores. Go follow us at BurbankCA. But let's make it back about our awardees this evening. And your creativity, your dedication, I had the chance to drive around with my husband and our newborn and our dog who loves lights, by the way, and drive around and just see all of the decorations, all of the houses. It's just memories that I cherish forever and things that I used to do with my parents when I was a little kid. So I'm glad I'm getting to spend that with my family, and I couldn't do it without you all taking the time, the energy, the dedication, and the absolute love of Halloween to decorate. So again, one of my favorite events, and without further ado, let's play a brief video of our winners. I swear I didn't know they were going to put our social media tags on there. More shout-outs to please follow the city of Burbank. Now I will bring the awardees forward, and if you're here when I call your name, please come on down. And I see some families in the crowd, so if I call one of you, please bring on everybody. For our third place residential, we have Michael Reyes. They're not here today, but that was an amazing house. For our second place residential, Jeff Gritten. And you're all in matching shirts. This is amazing. I only hope that this is in my future. Congratulations. On behalf of myself and my colleagues on city council, we appreciate all you do, and you make us proud. Thank you. Our first place, can I get a drum roll? And don't go too far, because we're going to take a picture altogether. Tom Vice. And again, oh, we know this was a team effort. Well, thank you for what you do. Again, you make us so proud, so happy to live in Burbank. And you know, a lot of times, my colleagues and I, we can take credit for making sure the city's running, potholes, all of that. You all bring the creativity and the flavor, and that's a big reason that people live in Burbank. So thank you all for what you do, truly. And now, a very important category, our youth category winner, Harlow and August Dickens. All right, I wish I had that dedication at your age. I was busy getting candy. All right, and then last but not least, our commercial winner, Palm Dental Studio. Another team effort, at you all. And I love the giant thirty-foot scouts, and I hope that stays there the whole year. Just put a Santa hat on. All right, so this is everybody who has been our winner in the Our Burbank Decorating Contest. Please participate. We have our holiday contest coming up, and if not, we also have next year. Let's give them a big round of applause. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, looking right here. One, two, three, and one, two, three.
Now, our third presentation this evening is a presentation of a proclamation declaring November first through thirtieth, 2025, as Burbank Temporary Aid Center Month in the city of Burbank. And I can't think of a better month to do so than at a time when a lot of folks are in need of food assistance, at a time when benefits are being cut, at a time when many people in our community are in need. BTAC is an organization, and BTAC for short, is an organization that has been there, that has stood with our community, and that has made sure that Burbank remains fed. So I can't think of a better time. Now more than ever, we're incredibly grateful. And I would like to invite board members, Ms. Jeanette Myers and Ms. Kimberly Clark to join me at the podium. All right, now let me read you this lovely proclamation. If you all like to share some words, be more than happy to hear them. All right, so whereas Burbank Temporary Aid Center, or BTAC, was founded in nineteen seventy-four to assist the homeless and poor in our community, and whereas for over fifty years, the Burbank Temporary Aid Center has been a steadfast source of hope, compassion, and practical assistance for individuals and families facing difficult circumstances, offering food, hygiene products, and critical support with dignity and respect. And whereas BTAC continues to address the ongoing issue of food insecurity in our community, ensuring that no resident goes hungry and that everyone has access to the basic resources necessary for health and stability. And whereas through the dedication of its staff, board of directors, volunteers, donors, and community partners, BTAC exemplifies the spirit of service and collaboration that make Burbank a caring and resilient city. And whereas during this special month, we celebrate BTAC's enduring legacy of compassion, generosity, and service, and we encourage all of our residents to support and honor this mission of this remarkable organization. Now therefore I, Nikki Perez, Mayor of the city of Burbank, do hereby proclaim the month of November, 2025, as Burbank Temporary Aid Center Month in the city of Burbank.
All right, she totally stole my thunder. That was my first paragraph that you took there, lady. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much to the entire city council. Burbank Temporary Aid Center has been around for fifty years, and we are planning to be around for the next fifty-plus as well, but we need your help. You mentioned SNAP, the Supplemental Nutrition Program benefits. We saw those have a suspension, and just try to guess, this is the interactive portion real quickly, we had a spike in the use of our services this month. What percent do you think it went up? Ten percent? Fifty percent? Just anyone, throw something out. Two hundred? You were close. What? Eighty? Eighty percent? Three hundred percent. Threefold increase, and a lot of those people were people who had never used Burbank Temporary Aid services before. So we're largely a food bank, a riyad, so please help donate food or hygiene products, anything that you can spare, we can use, and we appreciate this proclamation very much.
I just want to say that when I first moved home to Burbank from Europe in 2010, I found out about BTAC because I was volunteering. I didn't have a job. So when you don't have a job, what do you do? You volunteer. So I volunteered with the senior community outreach at St. Joe's, Providence-St. Joe's, and I, one of my first call-outs was to go to a senior
Contest. Please participate. We have our holiday contest coming up. And if not, we also have next year. Let's give them a big round of applause. Thank you, everybody. Now, our third presentation this evening is a presentation of a proclamation declaring November 1st through 30th, 2025 as Burbank Temporary Aid Center Month in the city of Burbank. And I can't think of a better month to do so than at a time when a lot of folks are in need of food assistance, at a time when benefits are being cut, at a time when many people in our community are in need. BTAC is an organization, and BTAC for short, is an organization that has been there, that has stood with our community and that has made sure that Burbank remains fed. So I can't think of a better time. Now more than ever, we're incredibly grateful. And I would like to invite board members, Ms. Jeanette Myers and Ms. Kimberly Clark to join me at the podium. We're all huggers here. Alright, now let me read you this lovely proclamation. If you all like to say, share some words, be more than happy to hear them. Alright, so whereas Burbank Temporary Aid Center, or BTAC, was founded in 1974 to assist the homeless and poor in our community, and whereas for over 50 years, the Burbank Temporary Aid Center has been a steadfast source of hope, compassion and practical assistance for individuals and families facing difficult circumstances, offering food, hygiene products and critical support with dignity and respect. And whereas BTAC continues to address the ongoing issue of food insecurity in our community, ensuring that no resident goes hungry and that everyone has access to the basic resources necessary for health and stability. And whereas, through the dedication of its staff, board of directors, volunteers, donors and community partners, BTAC exemplifies the spirit of service and collaboration that make Burbank a caring and resilient city. And whereas during this special month, we celebrate BTAC's enduring legacy of compassion, generosity and service. And we encourage all of our residents to support and honor this mission of this remarkable organization. Now therefore I, Nikki Perez, Mayor of the City of Burbank, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2025 as Burbank Temporary Aid Center Month in the city of Burbank.
Alright, she totally stole my thunder. That was my first paragraph that you took there, lady. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much to the entire city council. Burbank Temporary Aid Center has been around for 50 years and we are planning to be around for the next 50-plus as well, but we need your help. You mentioned SNAP, the Supplemental Nutrition Program benefits. We saw those have a suspension and just try to guess, this is the interactive portion, real quickly. We had a spike in the use of our services this month. What percent do you think it went up? 10%? 50%? Just anyone, throw something out. 200? You were close. What? 80? 80%? 300%. Threefold increase. And a lot of those people were people who had never used Burbank Temporary Aid Services before. So we're largely a food bank, so please help donate food or hygiene products, anything that you can spare, we can use. And we appreciate this proclamation very much.
I just want to say that when I first moved home to Burbank from Europe in 2010, I found out about BTAC because I was volunteering. I didn't have a job. So when you don't have a job, what do you do? You volunteer. So I volunteered with the senior community outreach at St. Joe's, Providence St. Joe's. And I, one of my first callouts was to go to a senior woman's home up on the hill and take her to the grocery store. And when I got there, I saw that she needed quite a bit more help than just a ride to the grocery store. So I did what I could there on the spot. But when I was talking to her, she said, you know, honey, there was a time when I just didn't even have any food. And if it weren't for BTAC, I wouldn't have eaten. And she said, my parents left me this house. I've never married. I don't have any children. I'm all alone and I'm losing my sight. And if it weren't for BTAC. And I said, what is this BTAC? And so she told me. And that's how I first got to know about Burbank Temporary Aid Center. And I've been on the board almost, I think, 12 years or so. It's been a long time and it's been so rewarding. We thank all of our supporters. I have a list here. This is just some of them. Tequilas, IKEA, Scouting America, Bradcorp Real Estate. So many people have stepped up to help us and to support our needs. And I can't not mention our volunteers. We have people in our pantry, Edward Stapleton, who runs our pantry, and all the volunteers who come forward. And if it weren't for them, we couldn't do what we do for the community. So thank you very much for all of your support.
Almost done, I promise. I think with that, we need a special call out to Libby, who is the volunteer volunteer coordinator. So if you're interested in doing something to help your community, maybe consider volunteering for BTAC. Right, Libby? Contact Libby. And then last, actually, my.
How can folks reach out? Where can folks reach out?
The BTAC will get you there, or you can just put in Burbank Temporary Aid Center and you will find us. Shameless plug, thank you. I appreciate that. Last, I don't know if you know, we are merging with another organization. That's a wonderful organization here in town called Home Again LA, which works to house people. So BTAC and Home Again LA have a wonderful synergy going. We're hoping that this will kind of put a bow on it soon. But that's happening. That's exciting.
And last, nothing really. The food pantry will go on and we will be a merged group. So things will change a little bit, but hopefully the synergies will be super positive and we can do even more to help people in the community who really need this help. Thank you so much.
Thank you all. And folks, please do see Libby if you're interested. There's nothing more, you know, especially in these times if we're frustrated, if we're worried about our neighbors, our friends or ourselves, and we feel anxious about what to do, there's nothing better, like Kimberly mentioned, than volunteering. And I know BTAC needs volunteers and they need donations. So thank you, everybody. Take a picture. And that was the first time I've dropped the mic. I gotta say, with three meetings left in the year as mayor, let's not too mad. Mr. City Manager, anything to report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have one item to report. I'd like to call up our Chief Information Officer, Jose Calderon. And he's gonna provide a brief update regarding our new refreshed Burbank 311 app, as well as our new police and fire websites.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, Madam City Clerk, Jose Calderon, Chief Information Officer. I'm here to announce the launch of our newly redesigned websites for both the police and fire departments. These platforms offer easier access to services and safety information, all in a user-friendly format. You can reach both websites at BurbankCA.gov under the Departments tab. So that's the first half of the announcement. Second half of the announcement is that we're excited, we're also excited to introduce the redesigned 311 mobile application. This redesign makes it simpler for residents to report issues and stay connected with city departments right from their phones. We encourage everyone watching from home and here in the audience to download and explore our Burbank 311, which is available on the iOS App Store and Google Play. Simply search Burbank 311. Thank you.
Thank you. We're definitely excited about that 311 app revamp. Thank you. Now, our next item is a presentation of a state legislative update by Emanuel Jones and Associates. Joining us tonight is Ms. Kira Emanuel-Johns. Welcome and thank you for joining us.
Thank you so much, Mayor Perez. It's always a delight to be back in the beautiful city of Burbank. As she noted, I'm Kira Johns with Emanuel Jones and Associates, and I'm your state-level lobbyist. I've had a very productive day, meeting with your staff, talking about city priorities, what's happened this year and what we think will be seen coming in 2026. With that, I'd like to do a little overview of this year and the highlight, what's on the table for next year. The governor's bill signing period ended on October 13th. And of the 917 bills that passed both houses and went to the governor's desk, 794 were signed into law with 123 vetoed by the governor. So right around a 13% veto rate. That's actually a little bit lower than what they typically are. It's usually closer to about 15%. That said, this was a very challenging year, with the state dealing with a multi-year, multi-billion dollar budget deficit. This led to a year-long push for affordability in the state. And that really wove into legislation throughout the year. And for a number of bills, it resulted in them not moving forward because of the cost. In addition, the governor and Democratic leaders continued to push for stronger housing, environmental and social justice policies, just as the Trump administration continues to move in the opposite direction. While a lot happened this year and some very significant legislation at that, a lot didn't happen as well. Significant legislation that would have overridden local permitting for high-speed rail tracks and stops was held as a two-year bill. That legislation will be back next year, so more work to be done. Legislation did not move forward that would have prohibited cities from appropriately and thoughtfully addressing homelessness in the community. We significantly narrowed legislation on labor requirements for contracting out and stopped very significant legislation that would have made significant changes to PAPRA by increasing pensionable compensation, defined benefit compensation, contribution costs, and cost state and local agencies hundreds of millions of dollars annually. And while we ultimately didn't stop SB 79, we were able to stop some other very problematic housing bills, including ones that would have required cities to ministerially approve a housing development up to eight units without any regard to density, height requirements or parking. So what did happen? AB 130 and SB 131, two-budget trailer bills contain some of the most significant changes to SEQA and infill housing in a number of years. These changes eliminate the project-level SEQA review, but will retain SEQA review at the housing element level. The two bills also contain a six-year moratorium on local, state and local changes to the building standards, with a few exceptions. And the two bills also contained another round of significant funding for homeless services. There were more than 45 bills signed by the governor on housing, notably SB 79 that we talked about. But additional bills were passed that signed and signed into law that affect ADUs and junior ADUs, incorporation of electrification planning, and bills that address changes to density bonus laws and others. SB 707, which I understand that you've had quite a bit of conversation on, makes extensive changes to the Brown Act, including adding new remote public comment requirements for city meetings, creates no exemptions from certain teleconferencing rules, and extends several sunsetting Brown Act laws. And in the good news category, the state extended the state's cap and trade program, now called Cap and Invest. And in doing so, we were able to protect climate allowances for Burbank water and power. The final deal to extend the climate program also included important funding from the state's Greenhouse Gas Reduction Fund, that includes funding for affordable housing, transit, clean air, along with other priorities to be set by the legislature. There was also a significant expansion of the state's film and television tax credit program, very important to the community here. And AB 91 that the city supported was a success this year, getting signed by the governor, which is critical legislation that addresses longstanding systemic issues that have resulted in the under-representation of Armenian Americans in the state demographic data. Important bills that the city supported were signed into law, including a bill to protect city revenues from prepaid wireless users, as well as a bill to make it easier for cities in California to contract with muralists to do public art. It also established, we supported bills that established a grant program to fund wildlife prevention efforts and increase biodiversity resilience of communities, and expanding programs to support senior nutrition. The legislature approved millions in dollars and multiple bills to protect Californians from federal actions on immigration, environmental and other actions by the White House. And that included early budget actions of $25 million to the Attorney General and $25 million to legal immigration assistance, as well as several bills on immigration and ICE. And in the final budget package that was passed, $3.3 billion out of the $10 billion of funding from Proposition 4 that was passed last year, will now begin rolling out. This includes important funding opportunities for parks, extreme heat, wildfire mitigation and others. And we had lots of conversation with your staff about the Prop 4 language. Now that the legislative session is done, members are back in their district. And with the passage of Proposition 50, we're beginning to see some shifting of members of the state legislature to congressional districts. That may have some ripple effect on local races, so we'll see how that begins to play out. We also saw a new leader in the Senate take over yesterday. Senator Limone, who comes from Santa Barbara area, has a very strong background in climate and environmental justice issues. She was the Senate lead on the cap and trade discussions this year. And she'll hit the ground running and she'll need to appoint her new leadership and new committee chairs. Very notably, she has not spent a lot of time on housing and land use, and that's really not been a priority area for her. And I'll just note, on SB 79, she did not vote on the bill either time it was on the Senate floor. Finally, they'll return to Sacramento for the second year of the legislative session on January 5th, and fairly quickly to see the introduction of the governor's budget about January 10th, and look at two-year bills that are eligible to be taken up in January. They will also have an introduction deadline of February 19th, and we anticipate about another 2,000 bills again this year. The annual, the annual numbers. Number of major issues that are emerging in 2026, affordability is going to remain a very top issue. Already several legislators have noted they are looking for options to continue to address housing, utility and other rising costs in the state. It's another tough budget year ahead. While the last two months have seen tremendous tax returns for the state, well in the $1 to $2 billion range ahead of projections, the Legislative Analyst Office will predict, will do their annual review in the next couple of weeks. The last review I saw was looking still in about the $15 billion range going forward the next two years because of a state structural deficit. We'll have a much better picture though on January 10th, when the governor releases his budget. We'll see a continued fight on high-speed rail and local permitting. We saw an end-of-session run last year to address property transfer taxes. That sounds like it will be back, both at the statewide ballot and in legislation. Further discussions on legislation on wildfire and high severity zones, including pending regulations on Zone Zero, which is that five-foot perimeter around structures. A renewed effort by the governor to streamline the permitting process for the Delta Conveyance Project will likely be back. Multiple bond proposals, we have $10 billion proposals on housing and transportation bonds are on deck to try to get those on the November ballot. And more housing legislation, of course, because we wouldn't have a year without it. And included in that is expected to be a cleanup bill to SB 79 that would be introduced in early 2026. Another very, very busy year, so I'll stop there and see if there are any questions.
Thank you so much for the recap of the year. That's a great summary of everything we've seen. And oh boy, another 2,000 bills. Okay, anybody have any questions? Councilwoman Mullins?
I have a question, and it's a process question. So regarding SB 79, our council asked staff to send a letter opposing SB 79. And from my understanding, it didn't make it on the list the first time, even showing that we did send the letter. So I believe the city manager sent a follow-up letter. Can you explain kind of what the process and does the governor even get to read those letters?
100%. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, it seemed like it was lost somewhere and then all of a sudden it appeared and then the public thought, well, you didn't send the letter because we don't see it on the list. So what happens in that process?
So I think what you're referring to is what happens in the committee process. And letters that get sent in, committees have deadlines. Sometimes they're a week before, two weeks before. Houses have deadlines of when they will post the letters. Sometimes letters will get left off of the committee analysis or off of the floor analysis. And it's not that the letters haven't been submitted and they're not in the system. It's for whatever reason, on the dates or the times, they didn't make it onto that particular list. Governor's letters are a little different because those are sent separately and apart. But you can always go in and look at what's the official record. That's an internal system, computer system for the legislature. And we were always on that record.
So how do we, next time, hopefully, you know, we don't need to send one anytime soon. But if there is another letter that we need to send, whether we support or oppose, how do we ensure that we get it there on time so the committee is able to see it sooner than later and it makes that list early on?
That's a committee-by-committee issue. So we just need to make sure that we're making their internal deadline. And that's typically one to two weeks out ahead of a committee hearing. Sometimes that's almost impossible to make because they'll set the bill with a two-week notice. And then they'll have the, you know, the deadline for letters is that day. So it's just, it's making sure that we're getting to that internal deadline ahead of time. And that's just, we can make sure that we get everyone the information.
I would just add that that happens very often from the other side. But I'm glad we made sure it was in the official record. Questions?
I noticed a number of the bills that the governor vetoed had to do with healthcare coverage and expanding coverage, mostly to women. And his reasoning, he said it may increase healthcare costs overall. Has he given any reasoning of how he squares that with what's happening nationally, where there's people trying to take away healthcare and increase rates? Like, what is his thinking there?
Yeah, it depends on the individual bill. You know, some of the bills, it's gonna be, if it's spending that's outside of the state budget. So if it's a bill that you want to do that creates a new program or expands a program, but that amount of money was not accounted for in the budget, that's pretty typically vetoed by the governor because they're trying to contain the budgetary costs, especially when you have a structural deficit. It could be that it increased the costs of Medi-Cal, which has been a particularly tough issue because, for two reasons. One, they've lost their funding from the big beautiful bill, right? So the federal funding was cut. But in addition to that, because of the previous expansions in previous years, the funding for Medi-Cal was ran over by about $6 million this year. And so they had to do an emergency budget bill with an emergency appropriation to kind of backfill that program. And then in the budget, they sort of stepped back and said, we're gonna need to cap the enrollment of Medi-Cal over the next couple of years for certain adults. It would, so I'd have to look at the individual bill. But those are kind of two of the really big reasons why a bill would be vetoed by the governor.
Okay, thank you.
Great question. Any other questions, comments? No? Thank you for the presentation. We know it's a rough couple of years ahead with the deficit. And just congratulations to Senator Limone. She's a wonderful leader.
She is a great leader.
Thank you. Alright. Mr. City Attorney, will you please report on closed session?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council, and for the benefit of the public, the city council met this afternoon at 4:00 PM to discuss two items in closed session. The first item is a matter of existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1 in the case of Narcissian versus City of Burbank. It's an automobile accident, personal injury case. The second item was conference with the city's real property negotiator, Ms. Marissa Garcia, Parks and Rec Director, pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8 concerning negotiations with the Colony Theater for the Burbank Center Stage Theater. The city council took no reportable action in both of these items.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Alright, now is the time many of you have been waiting for. Now is the time for general public comment. I will be calling out the speaker's name, as well as the person who's next in line to speak. And in order to keep public comment moving in a timely fashion, we have a designated seat right here in the front, this corner seat, for speakers who hear their name up next and would like to skit out a little closer. A timer is available on the podium. And this is also the last call for anybody who needs an interpreter. If nobody has reached out to our interpreter, seeing none, enjoy the rest of your not rainy evening outside. And let's see, people may choose to use the first period of public comment to address an agendized report, but will not be able to speak on that item again during the report specific, or during the public comment specific to that report. specific, or during the public comment specific to that report. You can only speak in an item once. And you may state your name for the record, and if I mince-pronounce your name, then please correct me for the record. All right, we will be, oh, before I get started, Madam City Clerk, how many folks do we have total?
We have 13 for in-person and one on the telephone.
Great, there being 14 speakers, everybody gets three minutes in line with our City Council guidelines. We will be starting with Ron Vexx, followed by Mark Scroggs.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council members. Ron Vexx. The Landlord-Tenant Commission and/or the Housing Enforcement Unit received 191 claims during the period of August 1st, 2024 through September 30th, 2025. Of those, 13 were referred to the City Attorney's Office for action. I asked the Burbank Housing Authority how many were failure to provide notice per AB 1482, not providing three months relocation assistance per the city ordinance, violation of the state of emergency. 12 were for failure to give proper notice per AB 1482. This is a technicality, because had notice been given, there would have been no referral. These are not egregious actions. How can you expect housing providers with one or two properties, who treat them as passive investments while working full-time, to be completely knowledgeable of all the conditions of AB 1482? There were zero violations of the requirements to give three months relocation assistance. This surprised me. I expected some housing providers not to be knowledgeable of the state's requirement of one month, let alone the city's increase to three months. This leaves one violation of the state of emergency. I had not heard the emergency was over, but assumed it was, and was shocked by the Assistant City Attorney's disclosure it was still in effect 10 months later. This also is probably due to lack of public knowledge. So it is clear nearly three years of staff time, and therefore taxpayer money, probably millions of dollars with other serious issues being neglected, has been wasted on a non-issue. The underlying cause is housing providers who have, what should be passive investments, do not check daily to see what the city, county, state, and governor have decreed. If I had a time machine, I would go 30 years into the future to see the reaction of those advocating rent control to everything they had worked for over the previous 30 years in creating their social security in retirement, declared community property. Although this is clearly not possible, but I suspect you, Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Takahashi, Councilmember Anthony, know the answer, yet are following an ill-conceived ideology. Based on previous meeting deliberations regarding the rental market, it is clear Councilmember Mullins can contemplate the consequence of her actions. I am sure if he was not muzzled, Councilmember Rosati would express sentiments in agreement with those of Councilmember Mullins. I have 17 seconds left, so you have the second sheet, which is the landlord-tenant complaint form. I mentioned that on June 24th, and then, because I got no response, mentioned it again on July 15th. It has not been changed, and it's been four or five months. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Mark Scroggs, followed by Mike Moroney.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Mark Scroggs. I've been thinking the last few weeks, with things people bring up, the idea of leaving and moving and losing their jobs. This is a good time to talk about retraining and refocusing. I know we got the Jobs Connect, but I think there's much more work on it. I talk to people all the time. I've talked to a couple of heads of casting, they just got let go, and I don't feel they got a year's worth of money or salary, but they don't know what to do next. And there's a lot of people who want to make changes, and a lot of those changes are going to be, they're going to leave California, because they can't afford it, they don't want to be here. So we need to do stuff to help keep that. I know I brought it up, and it's been brought up in one of the task force little subcommittees, but it's like early stages, but we need to do it. And there's going to be more and more cuts, even though, you know, there is a tax incentive, it has been helpful. But, you know, you've got, right now, you've got Warner Brothers about to be sold to Paramount or Comcast and the Saudis. So you know that's all going to be cut up, and it's going to be a hot mess, and there's going to be a lot of people out of work, and there'll be, so just be ready for that. So I just, you know, just want to bring that up, you know, there's different churches and different organizations that are doing things, but the city should start thinking about, like, being a little more aggressive. Job Connect's great, but there should be a little bit more, and I know we're not the only industry that's dealing this, because AI is gradually cutting away on everything. On a side note, this is with the Temporary Aid Center, you guys, I mentioned this last time, we dropped some stuff off. I was told they really need grocery bags also. So if people want to do that and give them to them, you know, they don't need boxes, they just need bags for people. So everybody has extra stuff around, just bring it to them. So that's it for tonight.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Mike Moroney, followed by Susan O'Carroll. Welcome, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Your Honorable Mayor and Burbank Council Members. My name is Mike, and I'm a resident of the Burbank Equestrian Rancho neighborhood adjacent to the Warner Brothers Studios. I'm here tonight to bring before the Burbank City Council a concern that the Equestrian Rancho residents and I would like to present. The concern is in regard to the landscape removal of trees and shrubs that were removed between Valley Heart Street and the Los Angeles River, going parallel, but there's a, there's a parallel. I don't know if you're familiar with that area or not, but anyway, Valley Heart is parallel to the Los Angeles River there, and going from California Street to Gaylord Street. This landscape removal was performed by two different cities. First one was Burbank, City of Burbank. However, I'd like to make a note that the City of Burbank only has ground control of six feet of this area, going from the curb to the Los Angeles River. The first stage removal was performed by the City of Burbank, and then the second stage was by the Los Angeles Public Works Department, which was performed on September 15th, 2025. Prior to September 15th, there was a neighborhood meeting held with Mr. Jim Moyet, the Burbank Fire Department Battalion Chief, Fire Marshal, and the Equestrian Rancho residents, at which time they were informed of the intended trimming of the trees and the ground shrub cleanup, and what would be necessary to be performed. Everybody was, I'll stop right here off of my little speech here, everybody was kind of like under the impression that, well, we're going to trim the trees here, we're going to get rid of the weeds off the ground, which is what it should be. And there was a lot of stuff that should have been trimmed back. And basically, what we've seen there for about the last 70 years, well, that's a totally different story. It got all changed. So anyway, I'll go on with this thing, but that's what most of the residents here were under the impression of what was going to take place. Okay, um, okay, first tree trimming and shrub removal was performed by Burbank Public Works and was found to be acceptable, to be an acceptable cleanup to the Equestrian residents. Everybody liked what Burbank did, pretty much. I didn't hear any complaints about it. Then, after the Burbank tree trimming and shrub cleanup was completed, the City of Los Angeles Public Works, those are the bad guys, they came and performed an overzealous landscape removal of about 80% of the existing trees and bushes. It's my understanding that the City of Burbank was not informed by the Los Angeles Public Works Department on what their cleanup intentions was going to be.
Thank you for your comment, that's your time.
Is that, I'm done?
Yeah, sorry, you only have three minutes.
Can I, can I, can I make a request for this?
You can always reach us via email or chat with one of our staff members on the side if we have somebody available to talk right now.
And Madam Mayor, if he has any documentation, he can give it to our city clerk for dispersal.
Yes, he needs to have the number of copies, so if you'd like for all of us to receive it.
Okay, because I like to put it on a future agenda. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, please, please see the city clerk. All right, our next speaker is Susan O'Carroll, followed by Dan K.
Good evening. SB 79 goes into effect July 1st, 2026. You're running out of time to protect Burbank's single-family neighborhoods from destruction as a result of SB 79 in combination with the BRT, as well as to protect Burbank from related infrastructure impacts. For example, the city's EIR for the housing element update indicates that adding 12,000 housing units will exceed Burbank's sewage treatment capacity by 2.3 million gallons per day. SB 79 would allow for three times that level of additional density within a half mile of a single BRT transit stop. I don't know about you, but I'd like to still be able to flush my toilet. Given the infrastructure and neighborhood destruction impacts, excessive cost, and grossly inflated BRT ridership projections, the BRT cannot be justified. The city needs to act quickly to do two things if single-family neighborhoods within a half mile of Olive Avenue are to be saved. First, the city must take action to ensure that no dedicated bus lanes are located within city limits. It's a defining characteristic of a BRT and SB 79. That means you need to understand what power you have to deny BRT permits, given the cooperative agreement. And second, the city needs to work with other cities along the BRT alignment to get the no-ho BRT removed from the regional transportation plan, and to instead adopt the environmentally superior alternative two from the BRT EIR, which is express bus service with signal preemption along the same route. Getting Metro's board to adopt the alternative means that you will accomplish two aims: saving Burbank neighborhoods from SB 79 Tier 2 level development, and ensuring augmented transit service for transit users between Pasadena and North Hollywood. I've sent you an email explaining this in greater detail. I'm here tonight to ask that one or more of you during Agenda Item S, introduction of additional agenda items, ask that the following be agendized forthwith. Notify Metro that Burbank opposes the BRT and ask that it be replaced by environmentally superior alternative two, enhanced express bus service as described in the BRT EIR. And two, notify other cities along the alignment of BRT's request to Metro and ask them to join Burbank in opposing the BRT and requesting Metro adopt alternative two. This does not require completion of any SB 79 report before it can happen. I'm giving you a copy of possible language for a first-step request under Agenda Item S, and I ask that you act on this promptly. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Dan K., followed by Megan B. Welcome, you have three minutes.
Good evening, City Council. I'm grateful and deeply appreciative of Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Takahashi, and Councilmember Anthony for your supportive enhanced eviction protections, which will materially improve the lives of Burbank tenants. Councilmember Mullins, I'm frustrated to see you once again vote against tenant protections. You sit on that dais showing more concern for landlord profits than human displacement. You deny there's a problem, you dismiss our solutions. Two years into these discussions, you still lack basic understanding of Costa Hawkins. You and Rosati are the cusamano and jero corporate council members of choice to spread falsehoods about the tenant union and complain about anti-harassment ordinances and our right to organize, protections you also voted against. You say no tenant protections because we need more housing, but when pro-housing bills like SB 79 come up, you oppose those too. Perez and Anthony, use your time and energy to fight for a sustainable hard rent cap. I appreciate you. I don't have tens of thousands of dollars to donate, but I can dedicate my time knocking doors to make sure real working-class champions like yourselves remain on City Council. Vice Mayor Takahashi, after countless emotional stories of unfair evictions, unaffordability, and homelessness, you chose a cautious path at a moment that called for courage. You avoided bold decisive action that will prevent this displacement that you're so aware of. You impressed me, pushing back strongly against Mullins, who begged for higher unsustainable rent increases. But at the end of the day, you tried to appease the landlord lobby, and appeasement doesn't work. They won't vote for you, they'll spend their millions on Mullins and other candidates who will go to bat for them. Let me be clear, you did not pass a soft rent cap. It will not stabilize rent. You passed relocation assistance, a cash-for-keys policy allowing corporate landlords to jack up rents with the nominal penalty. Tenants are taxed on relocation payments, landlords can write them off. This watered-down policy represents political convenience over the needs of the working class at a time when our most pressing concern is the rising cost of living, especially housing. You did not pass a soft rent cap, but council and staff label it a soft rent cap and extend it to Costa Hawkins protected units. Burbank will get sued because you cannot stabilize exempt units. You're working on a two-tier relocation policy designed to circumvent Costa Hawkins. You will get sued and lose, and jeopardize other cities with properly implemented policies. Please, do this the legal and correct way, pass a hard rent cap and relocation assistance, stop the bleeding, end the displacement, cap the rent, and also vote yes on the Chandler extension. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Megan B., followed by Jomo, with a heart.
Hi, welcome. Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, and staff. I would like to comment on the last council session where the soft rent cap was discussed. The term is misleading, as instead of offering any meaningful hard rent cap, it offers landlords a chance for cash-forkeys to pay residents to leave so they can jack up rent. Already in the community, I have seen many people who think the current policy means a hard rent cap of 4%, and they were excited about that and dismayed to learn that that's not exactly what it meant. As it stands now, the policy leaves the city open to lawsuits, as the language is in violation of the existing Costa Hawkins bill. It is mislabeled as a rent cap when it is relocation assistance. For our residents who are uneducated, ESL, or simply not in the loop, how are they expected to understand this? What happens if they do not know something they can ask for when a rent increase is too high? What happens if they do not understand how to ask for mediation? It leaves open new ways for landlords to take advantage of tenants, especially our most vulnerable population of the elderly and immigrants. The relocation assistance will also be taxed for renters and a tax break for landlords. If we are to make real change, we still need a hard rent cap of 3% or lower, and there's still times to change this, and give the city and its majority renter population the security and stability they so desperately deserve. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Jomo, with a heart, followed by Mary O'Hare.
Hi, guys. I'm here to talk about a few things. First, I just want to provide an update on how many of our community members have been abducted by ICE and federal agents here in our city. I'm a part of a coalition, the Burbank Community Defense, and we monitor ICE activity here in our city. And so far, we believe at least 10 people have been abducted in our streets, from Home Depot to U-Haul to our car washes, and we believe it's a higher number, actually, because those are just the ones that we're aware of. And I want to make you all aware of this, because I know there are some City Council members that say we are spreading fear. And I want you to know, for those of us who are out in the streets, we are not afraid. We are bravely monitoring this ICE activity. And so it's important for y'all to know what's happening, because even though the news cycle moves on, ICE continues to escalate their tactics, abducting, kidnapping, law-abiding, legal residents, and citizens alike. And I would hope that you're aware of other cities like Pasadena or Santa Ana that have released statements and have created relief funds for impacted families, and those are lifelines. So yes, that's part one. Additionally, I want to express disappointment in the cash-forkeys policy that we are passing. That is extremely disappointing, especially as I hear that the BTAC use has increased by 300%, 250%. That's very concerning, and it demonstrates that our community is struggling. And I fear with this Trump administration, it's only going to get worse. And I think a hard rent cap would really stabilize our community. We call it community stabilization, because that's what it is, and I hope that you have vision for that as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Mary O'Hare, followed by John Jarrow.
I apologize for the two talking today. Thank you very much for this opportunity. I want to talk about council priorities, and I also want to talk about council time. We are facing with SB 79 something that is not only economically not viable for us with respect to our infrastructure, et cetera, but it also puts us against first families... respect to our infrastructure, et cetera, but it also puts us against first families that have bought their first house. Oftentimes, these are families who might be immigrants, et cetera. You think that that is not something that is capable? It happens all the time. So, the first thing I would ask you to do, and this is because of, and I'm looking over at our community development person, he said he can walk and chew gum at the same time, that the media district and SB 79 can be considered at the same time. But I would suggest to you that since the particular item came out, the media district plan, that finally filled in holes that the community was begging for, that we should give the community a transparent and long opportunity to look at that. That means, yeah, we know that Patrick can walk and chew gum at the same time, but we also have community members who are going into the holiday season. There is no earthly reason why the environmental impact statement needs to be 45 days. If you, in fact, file it, you can then say, okay, we'll give you 60 days to look at it. And I would suggest you want to look at that after you get the report about SB 79. It doesn't make sense to have comments on the media district plan that is supposed to incorporate SB 79 and let us know what we're facing. This is absolutely imperative. So, it doesn't have to be 45 days. The attorney will tell you. It can be 60 days. Do not make people think that you're trying to hide the media district plan during the holidays. Also, we need to look at safety more and economic development. I've got six seconds. Let me say, economic development. This city council has not really addressed that.
Thank you for your comment. That's your time.
I am going to finish my sentence.
Thank you for your comment.
This city council has not addressed economic development.
Mary, that's your time. We heard you, that's your time. All right, our next speaker is John Giroux, followed by Joe Pimienta. Welcome, you have three minutes.
Thank you, and good evening to all. Appreciate it. I'd like to address some issues on the media district's specific plan. It was analyzed very well by staff, but I want to emphasize that when this all started, housing was a priority, and it still is. But we shouldn't neglect business. Businesses are what drives this town, and when I drive down these major thoroughfares, I'm thinking and hoping that our major corporations do not leave. We need to bring back that economic base. It's okay to build housing in the media district, that's fine. As a matter of fact, we have 1,000 vacancies, and we're lowering rents, and we've got plenty more projects and housing projects coming online. But we need to bring in business to create jobs, to create economic force, to create a stimulus that we need in this community. Remember, if the entertainment industry leaves, and it's in the process of doing that, remember what happened to Detroit. The automobile industry never came back. The city never came back. Things are facing inflation every times, and we're in a recession. People don't realize that. We need to strengthen our business economic, bring in marketing, and get this town back on the road, and that's my concern. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Joe Pimienta, followed by Elizabeth Bax. Welcome, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, staff, and everybody present in the chamber. As you all know, I'm a participant with the Burbank Tenant Union, and yes, I do want to bring up the last meeting that we had, the evening of the 28th. And the thing that I want to point out the most is that it was a very long meeting. It went on until very late, so because of that, I do want to say, first and foremost, thank you to everyone who made that meeting happen, everyone present on staff, everyone who came in to clean up, everyone that came up to clean up the room after wrappers were left on the floor, the security guards that worked until late, every single person that was making sure that this meeting was transmitted through YouTube, all of those people that made this meeting possible because this is a serious issue, thank you so much. We know how hard you're working, so thank you. That is like the main thing that I want to stretch, because again, this is a serious issue, and it requires so many efforts, so again, I just want to make sure that that does not go unsaid. But you know, as a participant with the Burbank Tenant Union, you know, we kept head on like how many people came and spoke, and I do just want to say once more that a lot of people came to speak on behalf of what's going on to tenants. I mean, you saw the makeshift. We had business owners, we had elders, we had landlords, we had homeowners, we had students, we had people that are about to lose their housing, we had people that are doing okay but do not want to see their neighbors leave. This is the makeup of the people that are saying we need stronger protections for tenants, and we need a hard rent cap. These are the people that are speaking because they are going through this. So, with my last remaining bits, again, I just want to say that like, we're going to keep talking, we're going to keep speaking, we're going to keep coming in and bringing this to your attention, we're going to keep telling you about the tenants of what they are going through, and we're going to keep reminding you that because this is something that tenants are suffering, something needs to get done, and you're in the position to do so. So, with my last minute, I just want to say once more, yay for the bike path, and I hope the BRT becomes a designated bus lane, because you know, that would make the bus actually efficient. I can't tell you how many times I ride the bus and it's late because of the traffic, you know, the cars. So I'll say it once more, you have to stop prioritizing cars in order to make sure that it is fair for alternative modes of transportation in order to be effective. With my last remaining bit, once again, thank you for your service, but of course, free Palestine, fuck ICE, and yay for everything else that is happening, so thank you so much.
This is a PG show. Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Bax, followed by Corey Mensing.
Hello, everybody. Good evening tonight. Can I use that language too? I'm here to speak to the LA Metro's BRT going through Burbank and the cooperative agreement the city signed with LA Metro and SB 79 that will be going into effect in July 2026. Now that SB 79 has been signed by our governor, does all the public outreach that has been done in Burbank regarding the BRT become null and void? Does the outreach regarding the BRT now need to be done again? Now that SB 79 is part of California and Burbank's future, the residents of Burbank deserve to understand what is really about to happen to some of single-family home neighborhoods. Does the LA Metro need to do more studies on this BRT and how it will affect the city and its residents, including environmental impacts and infrastructure impacts? With SB 79 going into effect, the BRT now sets off potential issues for our city that should be studied and researched before this BRT project moves forward, if it moves forward at all. I was led to understand that the cooperative agreement that was signed by the city of Burbank and LA Metro gave us control of what would be done to our streets in Burbank. Is that wrong? Has there been any conversation between the city of Burbank and LA Metro regarding this? If so, can we know what that is? We know what's going on? Please share with the people that will be having to live with all of this. Residents deserve that. You figure out and not wait until it's too late. Residents do not deserve to have to wait for another two weeks, and another two weeks, and another two weeks to hear if maybe, maybe, oh, I'm not sure, it might be put on the future agenda, and an agenda that will be too late to do anything about it. I will repeat, we are all being led to believe Burbank has control of what the LA Metro does to our streets, and that the bus will flow with traffic and not dedicated lane. I would appreciate if someone would answer these questions and speak to if the city will support single-family home neighborhoods, or is this all really about the government and big corporate making money? At least, please do more public outreach now that the BRT's effects on Burbank have changed. I think we would all appreciate that. Let everybody know what's going on. Please be transparent. You're trying to create more housing. You want people to be able to afford to live in a home, but by having all this happen, you're going to take away homeownership, not make more of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Corey Mensing, followed by Joe DeVorasser. Hi, you have three minutes.
Hi, I have photos for mine. Well, the first two are like super quick, and I have a lot of acronyms, so I'll probably be reading a lot, too. So I moved into my current apartment on October 6, 2021, and that weekend, Kim Kardashian hosted SNL with musical guest Halsey. Do you have the photos? That's not important. Moving on from that, since I wasn't set up yet, I moved my TV and rabbit ears all around, right up against the TV on my head. The signal was just too weak. My dog was confused. From the little audio that came through, it sounded funny. I eventually forgot about this because I ended up subscribing to half a dozen streaming services and moved on, but it became more top of mind this year in light of the Jimmy Kimmel incident. I realized these really are public airwaves, and in many parts of Burbank, we don't actually have access to them. So when I looked at the FCC's DTV reception map, that was the one I was going to fumble. So Burbank is essentially a TV Bermuda Triangle for reception, so large areas have very weak or no reliable signal because of the terrain. I live on the hillside on East San Jose. So the things I know for sure, Burbank is the media capital of the world. We don't have reception to public airwaves in many areas, and I'd like access to be more equitable. So the picture's really in jest, because my questions are, is this a known issue? Are there other options for transmission or retransmission? Is there guidance for residents on how to access public airwaves? And could we put guidance on the shared city's website, which I saw the updates that rolled out, and it's fantastic. It's important to me because it's a service, and Burbank's services are the best. We're tipping very much into a for-profit space in areas that are intended to be for the public good, is what I've noticed. So I called the FCC about this on October 2nd, caller tug, because I was met with a very interesting voicemail message because of the shutdown. So I haven't explored it further, I just wanted to bring it here, just to ask the question. I did have a very lovely chat with Mary and Brianna from PAO last week. That was a really nice chat about all manner of things besides this. Oh, I have like almost a minute left. So since Mark mentioned, I'm also very concerned about the potential sale of Warner Brothers. That was my first job, I was a tour guide when I first moved to Burbank. I flew out to interview for that job, to interview for a tour guide job, and then I got in and flew out and got a room in a house, so very concerned about that. Speaking of the FCC, we're obviously local, but like the FTC and the DOJ are supposed to prevent these monopolies. A lot of you know I was laid out from Disney two years ago and still looking, so it's a very big issue, and it means a lot to me because they're based in Burbank. Ooh, 20 seconds left still. I am reapplying for the Sustainable Burbank Commission, so I'll come back next week. 14 seconds left. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Our last speaker in person is Joe DeVorac. Welcome, I apologize if I mispronounced your name.
Well done, well done on the name, thank you, councilmembers, staff. I'm here to talk about the bike path. I love the idea of the bike path. I use the Chandler Bike Path, it's an amazing thing, it's done for Burbank. One of the issues is that our business is on Barney Street, and we are 70% of the properties on the east side of the street and a percentage on the west side, and we front Cypress Street. The only issue I see with it, and I've worked with Dave Kriskie on this, and he's been fabulous, the only issue that I see is that we have to get 53-foot trucks around there, and it's a big deal. You know, if they come down Barney Street and make a left on Cypress, it's doable, but a lot of times they come up Cypress and they make a right on Barney Street, and we go from building to building finding, you know, whoever owns those cars to get the truck around the corner. We've had up to 130 employees, so you know, there's a lot of movement down there. The lumberyard loads, the lumberyard through Barney Street. Barney Street is, you know, that's the main driveway for the lumberyard. So there's a lot of stuff there, and I'm hearing that we're going to get rid of the parking on the east side of the street. That could work to our benefit. It's going to be tough for a lot of people, but you know, that area is just a homeless parking spot, and it's a place where a lot of big trucks do their maintenance, and they leave all their oil and crap there, and on Monday mornings, we're running up and down the street picking up gallons of oil and filters and all the rest of the stuff. So it's something that might help that. Our business loads out of Cypress Street. Cypress Street has been a vacated street in Burbank since I was a kid, and we, through Ruth and Gino Gaudio, who was our redevelopment people, they basically let us use that lot, and so it's been a fabulous deal for us. We've loved the city for working with us, and we want to accommodate you however we can. Thank you for hearing me out. Appreciate you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, that was my last public comment card. We now go to the phones.
The one caller is Stuart Weisfeld.
Hi, Stuart, you're on with City Council, you have three minutes.
Evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Stuart Weisfeld, I'm the owner of Latris Family Restaurants, 697 North 33, and my concern is the Chandler Path reconstruction program. It's a great concern to us because we've lost considerable parking in front on Victory Boulevard due to the metro taking about six parking spots and producing for a bus station, a bus stop rather, and now they're going to take all the parking, my understanding is take the parking on Chandler, that's a big concern. We have a very bad parking issue within our mall itself, and now we're just putting more pressure on us, the shopping center that I'm in, with parking from companies that don't have lots of their own to park in our parking lot, and it's adversely affecting our businesses. I just want to have a reconsidering of this, and hopefully this will not pass through, because we've already lost several spots, and we can't afford to lose another 10 or 12 parking spots. I encourage the green space, that would be great, and I've questioned why do we need to take the parking away just to produce a green space? There's no more extended land there, that all they're doing is taking the train tracks and making that a green space. So, there's my concern, and hopefully we can address this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your call. All right, there being no further public comment, I now declare the public comment period, the general public comment period, closed. Now is the time for a brief response from City Council, the City Manager, and/or the City Attorney. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, I have three items here. So first, the gentleman regarding the Rancho and the brush clearance, Burbank Fire was not aware of how the LA City was going to do their brush clearance. I do know, I know as time ran out, I think there's a proposal. We certainly take a look at it, I just don't know if it's within our jurisdiction to be able to do anything, but we'll try our best to help facilitate whatever we can as far as whatever that proposal is, as far as if there's planting trees or whatever, so, but we'll take a look at that, but we were not made aware of what LA City was going to do. The second thing is, I'd like to call up our police chief to kind of provide our information related to what we are seeing officially with regard to ICE arrests.
Welcome, Chief.
Vice Mayor, Mayor, council members, and staff, I apologize, I got this Invisalign, and so don't make fun of me with the S's. Probably like, why do you sound weird? Well, that's why. So, as far as the ICE activity that is known and what's going on within the region, first, I want to empathize with our community as far as what they're feeling, the overall sentiment as what they're experiencing, and then what's being posted on social media, so can understand how that would make someone feel, especially given all the activity across the region as far as what's happening, more specifically in the city of LA. As far as our respective city, I can tell you that we have not become aware of any ICE activity. I think I've said it before, as far as they are not communicating in any way, shape, or form with us, which makes it very challenging for us in being able to provide the correct and vet the information that the community is seeing or experiencing. The only activity that is known The only activity that is known that we are aware of, and that just so happens to be, is whether they call our jail, are people that are being arrested and booked within our jail facility. And as you are aware, the emails that I have been sending, when we become aware of this information, you are one of the first ones, as well as the City Manager, as far as that activity. I want you to be informed so you can also provide that information to the greater community. And of those that are being arrested, they are for pretty significant felonies, as you are aware. A lot of it has to do with organized retail crime theft, and then South American theft groups. And then just, just among probably, those happen to be the most prevalent. Home Depot specifically, and the other areas within the city, U-Haul, we have not been able to substantiate those claims. We've specifically looked up and reviewed camera footage, and again, have not been able to substantiate any of those claims based on the times and the information that we have received. Have any questions?
Thank you, Chief. Any questions from anybody? And thank you for sharing the unique difficulty that is the lack of communication.
The S's. Don't make fun of me. Thank you.
All right. Then if I could continue, I'd like to call up our CDD Director, Patrick Prescott, just to clarify a few things related to SB 79.
Welcome, Mr. Prescott.
Hello, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, Patrick Prescott, Community Development Director. I just wanted to reiterate what we discussed during the study session regarding the Media District Specific Plan and related to SB 79 and Bus Rapid Transit. All three separate projects, but of course, they affect each other. We wanted to assure the community, we understand the concern about the potential implications of SB 79, and that we are analyzing what those effects might be for Burbank. We're doing that, excuse me, at the same time as we're preparing the Media District Specific Plan. And any portion of the Media District Specific Plan that would have to be modified in light of SB 79 would be modified. You will get a report on SB 79 before you see the final Media District Specific Plan document. Regarding the, the public review period for the Media District Specific Plan, any additional review time will have cascading effects on the schedule that would probably affect the schedule several months. I just wanted the Council to be aware of that.
I believe Councilmember Mullins has a brief question.
Brief question. Separate from the media specific plan, SB 79 also affects other areas, and specifically where Olive is. Can you give us a date, please? Because I hear transparency and we're...
The second, the second council meeting of January is our goal.
Okay. So we're bringing all this back to talk about...
SB 79, yes.
Thank you.
There will be maps. There will, it'll be, you'll see.
Lots of maps, please. Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then finally, the antennas, I think it was one of the last speakers, the, I will find out what the conversation was with respect to PIO. That may be a tough lift, as I've always been told that, you know, the antennas are up there at Mount Wilson, and the Verdugos unfortunately kind of are the impediment. But if there's information that we could provide easily or whatever, we'll follow up. So I just don't know that discussion that the gentleman had with our Public Information Office.
Okay. Yeah, I'd love to know. Okay. Mr. City Attorney, nothing? Okay. Who would like to respond first? Councilmember Mullins.
Why not? Let's go. Well, thank you, everyone who came and spoke. Thank you. The City Manager addressed most of the things I was going to ask for. The one, I'm looking down my list here, is in regards to the Rancho and the landscape. I'm going to be asking for something at the end of the meeting, and it could be just a memo, so we'll address that later. And the other person I'd like to address is Danny from the Tenants Union. Thank you for coming up here and always representing the tenants. I want to just let you know, I highly encourage you to go back and look at all the other meetings that we've had over the last two years, and count the votes for how many votes in support of tenant protection before we come up here and make an accusation that you're on one side versus the other. So thank you for that, and always reminding us about the tenants. Also, Mr. Giraud and Ms. Mary O'Hare, both of you did talk about economic development and businesses. And I could tell you, I'm personally, as a former business owner, I take economic development really serious and in heart to make sure that our city is thriving, and to make sure that we work with the Chamber of Commerce. And I believe Ms. Keizer is here somewhere. Thank you, the audience. So that is something, when the report comes back, we definitely be looking at how do we improve and enhance our economic development in the city. Can't talk about it tonight, but thank you for bringing that up, and also, Mr. Giraud, for mentioning and bringing it up. I think that's it. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rizotti.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to congratulate Parks and Recs again on receiving the Helen Putnam Award. It's quite an achievement. And then congrats to the winners of the Halloween contest. Went by some of those homes, and a lot of work, a lot of work. And then obviously, BTAC does such an amazing job year-round, not just, just, you know, this time of year, but just all year-round. Thank you for your, your work. The Speaker about the hedge on Valley Heart, we, I guess, do we have a plan in place, as you said?
I think the gentleman submitted a proposal. I don't know what, I haven't seen it yet, but we will certainly follow up and...
Okay, so we'll look at the proposal. Okay. And then Ms. O'Carroll, thank you again for coming. As you heard, we'll be looking at SB 79 and the impacts in the second week of January. Speaker Daniel, Daniel, thank you for coming. I would ask, if you want me to speak on landlord tenant issues, then don't address me. If you want to take that away from me, then please don't address me. If you want to talk about landlord tenant issues, make an appointment. I'd be happy to have that conversation. But don't take my free speech away and then address me. You understand what I'm saying? I can, later, if you want. Mr. Dvorak, thank you for coming. I don't know if you're still here. I, I see what you saw. I know exactly what you're talking about. I have actually have notes on that very thing. So thank you for coming. I was there five days, five days in the last week, and I actually saw the exact same thing that you mentioned. So thank you for coming. That's it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Anthony.
Thank you. I just wanted to tell Mr. Scroggs that I have been watching this fiasco with our local media company here, First Discovery, and now this potential, I hope, is just a rumor purchase from this foreign government. It's very troubling and it's very worrisome. So I will be paying very close attention to that. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Takahashi.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As always, thank you all for coming out tonight, taking time out of your day to speak on things that matter to you. It's clear that every single one of you who spoke tonight cares about the community and cares about what happens here. So thank you for taking that time. And for those who are watching, those who sent emails, had meetings and phone calls, also appreciate your time and all the comments you made. There were several comments made about last meeting and housing. That's not a topic to talk about tonight, but I wanted to say that you're all, I heard you all, and I hear your concerns. And please keep coming to speak your mind, as everyone is, encourage everyone to speak their mind on what is important to you here at the meetings. I also, in addition, would like to offer and continue to offer to meet outside of council chambers, to call my phone number, 818-252-9014. Text me. I have a calendar link on the city website as well to meet, and we can talk more in depth about these concerns that you voiced tonight, and we can continue to have this conversation. Okay? Most of my questions were addressed by staff and previous comments, so thank you all for bringing up those, and hopefully they're all going to be addressed. And just wanted, just one thing that hadn't been responded to, I wanted to point out, thank you, Mr. Scroggs, for mentioning that BTAC needs grocery bags. That's one thing I think a lot of us have, a lot of, and don't know where to take them. So thank you for both helping BTAC and for helping us not put plastic and grocery bags in the landfill and have a place to take them. So those little, the little things, but they make a difference, right? Huge award, congratulations to Park and Rec for the Adaptive Sports. Shout out to our Burbank Halloween. Halloween Town is absolutely our Halloween Town. And shows and our decorations, we are known for it. We have such creative people here. And, and congrats to the staff for the 311 app. If you haven't yet downloaded the 311 app, it is a magical app. In fact, it's so magical that you'll report something and come back an hour later, and it's fixed sometimes. That's how magical it is. So please download it and use it when you can. It really helps us internally, too, to make sure that whatever your requests are, get through quickly to the proper staff, and then that the issue that you're concerned about gets addressed quickly, too. So that's all I got. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Takahashi. Let's see. Number one, to Mary, to Mark Scroggs, and to Mr. Giraud, you're absolutely right. Economic development is very important, especially with our media and entertainment. It's our, the heart of our, our community. And I know through our task force, we will continue to be doing everything we can to get there, and kudos to Culver City that has been doing more to get there. So we are, we are looking at it. Please be, be aware that we are. And, but I want to acknowledge you bringing it up. I hear you. And I won't speak specifically to the Media District, because you know, I live there. Let's see, to the resident from the Rancho who came, thank you so much for coming. I don't know if you're still watching. Sorry your time got cut. Please email us, because I'm sure we'd all love to hear from you. But I can tell you specifically, I have seen exactly what you're talking about. That's on my running route in the mornings. And yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about. So definitely stay in contact with us. And like the City Manager shared, we're going to take a look and see what is within our jurisdiction, and if not, please reach out so we can explain what that whole process looks like. Third, I want to, I rarely do this, but I want to respond to Mr. Bax. I have to tell you, I do expect landlords to be knowledgeable about the laws regarding their property. That is absolutely an expectation of mine. The same way property owners who own homes are expected to be knowledgeable about the property rights, the property responsibilities, I do expect that. And if folks are not aware, you are always welcome to contact the city's Housing Enforcement Unit. Mr. City Attorney, do you have that phone number on hand?
I believe it's 818-238-5180.
Thank you. You mentioned the number of cases. You're absolutely right, there's low cases, but that is what that number is there for. Folks who have questions about their property rights or property responsibilities can call that number. Tenants who have questions can call that number. So yes, it is absolutely an expectation of mine. And then moving on to the last thing I want to touch on, and for folks who talked about the Chandler Bike Path, we will address that later during the discussion. But for folks who mentioned the Community Defense Program, thank you, gentlemen, for coming and mentioning that. I want to start by saying, as our chief shared, we're in a very, very precarious situation. And I do feel for our Burbank PD staff, because they are between a rock and a hard place. There's not much we can do when our federal government does not provide information. And, and we cannot confirm nor deny with our residents about what we're seeing. But, and I'm speaking as a resident now, what I am seeing online from you folks, from our businesses who have brought it to my attention, is that the reality is people are getting stuff in a van and taken. That's just the reality. And although on the official side, our hands are very, very tied in many ways, it is frustrating to be a local leader at this time, because I have to turn to my community and say, there's so little that we can actually do to stop this. I do want you to know that I feel very strongly about the phrase, "Solo el pueblo, salva el pueblo," which means only the community saves the community. And I think you all are embodying that by documenting, by seeing what is happening, by being present, and in some cases, even making sure you take down the names of people who are being taken away, so that their family members can have a chance in hell to find them. Because these are scary times that we're living in. And so I'm incredibly grateful for everything you're doing, for everything so many of our residents and neighbors are doing, and it doesn't go unnoticed. So thank you. And, and I have to say that I acknowledge that while the juxtaposition of the difficult situation our department and our city is in. So no, like the chief said, we hear you. And please keep sharing any information you have with us, with our chief, and with our City Manager. We, we may not be able to do much, but we want to be aware, because it's important to know what's happening in our community. And from at least this council member's perspective, thank you for what you're doing. All right, let's move on. Oh, and also, if you haven't reached out to BTAC to donate or volunteer, reach out to BTAC to donate or volunteer. All right, moving on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. Madam City Clerk, please read the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have eight items on consent this evening. Item one is approval of the City Council minutes of the joint meeting of October 14, 2025, the special meeting of October 21, 2025, the dark meeting of October 21, 2025, the regular meeting of October 28, 2025, and the dark meetings of November 4, and November 11, 2025. Item two is adoption of a resolution authorizing the City Manager to execute a design-build contract with Landscape Structures Incorporated, and delegating authority to approve plans and specifications for shade structures at Robert E. Gross Park Ballfields. Item three is adoption of a resolution approving contract documents, plans, and specifications, and authorizing execution of a contract for bid schedule number 1419, roof replacements and/or restoration, multiple buildings project, with Danny Letner Incorporated doing business as Letner Roofing Company, bindings of Seca exemption, 15301, Sections A and B. Item four is adoption of a resolution determining a public necessity and permitting the prime contractor to add subcontractors to the Community Services Building Security Upgrades Project. Item five is adoption of a resolution adopting the updated rules and regulations governing utility service. Item six is adoption of a resolution amending the fiscal year 2025/2026 citywide fee schedule to approve the updated Burbank Water and Power Electric Vehicle Charging Rates, Solar Net Billing Rate, Lifeline Discount, and Miscellaneous Service Fees. Item seven is approval of the Burbank Hospitality Association Fiscal Year 2025/2026 Annual Report. And item eight is appointment of members to the Youth Board for the 2025/2026 school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. All right. Councilmember Mullins.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull item number six for just a brief update. This is in regards to, oh, I'm not, well...
You would like a short report on that?
Short report, pull it, put it aside. We need, I need to have a quick report to provide to the public a reminder of what's coming up in January. And I believe staff is here today.
Mr. City Attorney, did you want to say something?
So it sounds like you want a brief report within the consent calendar and not to pull the item, which under your procedures would put it at the end of the agenda.
That is correct. I do apologize for using the word "pull" instead of, we're getting really technical, but...
Given, given, given the staff a heart attack with the word "pull."
I mean, come on now.
Welcome for a brief report, Riad.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Riad Slayman, Chief AGM, Burbank Water and Power. What I'm looking at here is item seven, Attachment 2. This is, this is my favorite when you look at the summaries, because it gives you all the, all the changes that are in the massive document. So the major changes here, 2443, just reiterates where the delineation between the utility service and the customer service would be. 2.91, 2.92, and 3.25 are really to enshrine the rules around the new rates for solar that were approved by council earlier in the year. So these are the actual rules surrounding those. So these are the actual rules surrounding those. Moving on to 3.26, that is the off-site facility charges, and that is some modifications to the capacity charge. Some changes include taking out the limitation of just having single-family residents get the 200 amp exemption. That is now across the board. Small businesses, any, any premise gets that, and it's a flat 9.6 KVA credit. There are some changes over multi-units and the trend down of, of that, so that there should be a good savings on KVA demand there. 3.26, another example of how to apply to that. And then, Exhibit D, E, and F, those are related to the changes and the rules and regs for the solar.
And can you briefly remind us that the programs are available to assist with some of the increases?
Yes, we do have the lifeline, that's going from 40% to 45%, started January 1st, and then the bus, I believe, is going from 12% to 15%. And you could apply.
Yeah, and there's a ton of rebates that you could look up on the BWP website as well, so.
That's correct. Oh, sorry, 12 to 14 on the bus. Thank you, Mr. Lilio.
One more question?
Yeah, just very quickly, as a charter city with our own public utility, we are not beholden to the CPUC's net metering three on our solar. Instead, we have our own tiered rate that we're implementing.
That's correct. That's our own rate.
Thank you.
One more quick question?
Yes, just a follow-up to looking up for the rebates. So, there's, you know, sometimes it's hard to find the information, or it's a little confusing. If somebody would like to call and just ask if they're qualified for the rebates or what's available to them, where could they call to find out?
They can call BWP's general number, and we can, I'll, I'll get that to you a little bit later, but they could also come in. We have their conservation desk right in front. They can ask for that assistance. You can get one-on-one assistance there. But I'll get you that number in a bit.
Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you. I appreciate the brief update.
My pleasure.
As opposed to the poll.
As opposed to pulling the report.
Thank you.
Didn't mean to scare you there, but, you know. On that note, I'd be happy to move the consent calendar as presented by the city clerk.
All second, why not? All right, we have a motion, a second, let's take the vote. Councilmember Anthony?
Pull, I mean, yes.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Takahashi?
Yes.
And Mayor Perez? Yes.
Thank you.
And slowly, the city attorney lost his last shred of patience.
It's early, I have more patience.
Don't tell them that.
Well, I think we have the rebate number.
We have the rebate number.
Yes, customers can call 818-238-3700. That's 818-238-3700.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now, this is the time and place for the hearing to adopt a resolution declaring the results of majority protest proceedings and to renew the Burbank Tourism Business Improvement District. If you wish to comment on this item in person, please present a salmon public hearing card to the city clerk. If you wish to speak over the phone, please call us now at 818-238-3335. You will be placed in a queue until the public hearing comment period begins. Before we begin, councilmembers, any disclosures? No. Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, have the notices as required by law been given?
They have.
Great. Do we have the complete file of exhibits, correspondence, emails, other documents?
Yes.
And has the city received any written communication on this matter, and have they been provided to all councilmembers?
We received one correspondence, and you have been provided with a copy.
Thank you. Now, will the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us? Oh, you're matching everybody else in the burgundy today.
It's the theme tonight, yes.
Staff, the staff memo.
Good evening, Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Takahashi, and members of the city council, Mary Hemzouyan with the Community Development Department. Tonight, we are here to consider the final step in the renewal process of the Burbank Tourism Business Improvement District, an organization that has played a significant role in elevating Burbank's presence as both a business and leisure destination for more than 14 years. The T-Bid was originally established in 2011 to market and promote Burbank and its hotels as a desirable national and international destination. Since that time, the T-Bid has provided a stable and dedicated revenue stream that supports sales and marketing efforts, and funds projects that directly enhance the visitor experience in our city. To recap, the renewal process and how we got here, on September 9th, 2025, city council adopted the resolution of intention to renew the T-Bid. We then notified all hotel owners of this action and offered them the opportunity to protest. On October 14th, 2025, we held a public meeting to receive protest on the proposed renewal. No protests were received at that time. And tonight, we hold the final public hearing to declare the results of any majority protest, and for council to consider adoption of the resolution of renewal. For the new renewal to proceed, more than half of the hotels representing over 50% of the total district's assessments must sign a petition in favor of the renewal. 14 of the 18 hotels, representing 91.33% of the district's assessments, signed petitions supporting the renewal. This is well above the 50% threshold required to move forward. The remaining four hotels, two of which are represented by the same owner, opted not to sign the petition, but also did not oppose the renewal. The hotels were contacted again to ask for their support prior to the final hearing. The 91.33% support reflects a unified vision among our lodging businesses to provide continued investment in tourism promotion and visitor experience enhancements. If council elects to renew the district tonight, the T-Bid would enter into a 10-year term beginning July 1st, 2026, with a new projected budget of approximately $2.27 million annually, based off of a 1.75% assessment on overnight room revenue. The T-Bid currently operates on a 1% assessment and generates $1.4 million annually. The increase in funding will enable the T-Bid to expand its marketing reach to attract more visitors, strengthen Burbank's brand as a tourist destination, and pursue projects that enhance the visitor experience, such as public art installations, a dedicated shuttle service, monument entry signage, and a potential trolley or shuttle for visitors. For more than 14 years, the T-Bid has proven to be a valuable organization and partner to the city. The T-Bid has helped shape Burbank's identity as a vibrant, welcoming, and dynamic destination for 3.2 million visitors annually from all over the world. With the upcoming FIFA World Cup and LA 28 Olympics, the renewal of the district will further Burbank's position as a premier tourist destination in Los Angeles. For these reasons, and in recognition of the support from our hotel community, staff recommends that the city council vote to renew the Tourism Business Improvement District for a new 10-year term. Thank you, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much for the presentation, Ms. Hemzouyan. We will now move on to opening the public hearing to hear from any person who wishes to speak on this matter. Each person may address the council on the public hearing item only, and the public hearing public comment period is now beginning, and no additional cards or calls will be accepted. Madam City Clerk, how many total?
We have two callers and, sorry, two cards and no callers.
Okay, great. There being two speakers, you each get three minutes. We will start with Jamie Keizer, followed by Kristin Perry. Welcome, Jamie. You have three minutes.
Thank you. It's great to see all of you. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Jamie Keizer-Thomas, and I'm here on behalf of the Burbank Chamber of Commerce, as well as my role as Secretary of the Burbank Hospitality Association Board of Directors. I'm here tonight to express our strong support for renewing the Tourism Business Improvement District. Tourism is one of Burbank's most reliable economic drivers. It sustains nearly 8,000 local jobs and generates more than $31 million in tax revenue that goes right back into essential services in our city. The T-Bid is a major part of that success. Over the past year, T-Bid funded marketing campaigns delivering more than 25 million impressions, and its public art investments and event sponsorships continue to attract visitors who don't just stay in our 18 hotels, they dine in our restaurants, they shop in our stores, and they enjoy our entertainment venues. Those visitors fuel economic activity across every corner of our city, boosting sales tax and strengthening the small businesses we work with each and every day. This public-private partnership has a proven track record. Since 2015, the T-Bid has invested over $10 million to elevate Burbank as a premier destination. And with major global sporting events on the horizon, the opportunities for Burbank will only grow. Renewing the T-Bid is what will keep us competitive, vibrant, and welcoming. A new 10-year term ensures stable funding and long-term planning, so we can continue building on programs that are already delivering real results. On behalf of the chamber and the broader business community, we respectfully urge you to approve the T-Bid renewal for another decade. Thank you for your time and your continued partnership.
Thank you for your comment. Our next and last speaker is Kristin Perry. Welcome, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Kristin Perry, Director of Sales at the Cambria Hotel Burbank, and Board Member of Burbank Hospitality Association. As one of the, as one of Burbank's newest hotels, I want to share how important the T-Bid has been to our early success. The T-Bid provides the kind of support and marketing reach that a new property simply can't generate on its own. From partnerships with Warner Brothers Studios Hollywood, to the Partner Hotel Program with Universal Studios, where our hotels appear on the theme park's ticketing website, involvement and digital campaigns, reaching the road trip and non-stop flight markets into the Hollywood Burbank Airport. All of these efforts directly helped us, helped us build occupancy, attract group business, and establish our hotel in a competitive market. As an example of impact, the Universal Studios Partner Hotel Program alone generated $1.2 million in overnight stays last year at Burbank Hotels. The T-Bid also strengthens, strengthens the visitor experience citywide through programs that elevate Burbank's profile. Citywide public art events, the bicycle program, and securing partnerships with such major annual conventions as the CTN Animation Expo, the Arts Media and Entertainment AME Institute, and Burbank International Film Festival. These programs and more are critical building blocks preparing the city for FIFA 2026, the 2020, 28, the 2028, excuse me, Olympics, and the ever-changing visitor landscape over the next 10 years. Renewing the T-Bid ensures the new hotels like ours can continue to grow and contribute to the city's economic vitality. I respectfully request your support in approving the renewal of the T-Bid. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, and I love your outfit.
Thank you.
All right, there being no additional public comments, I now declare the public comment period closed. At this time, we will hear from the representative of the Community Development Department if they'd like to make any further comments.
No further comments.
Saying no further comments. All right, does the council have any questions of staff? Councilmember Anthony?
I just want to comment on Ms. Perry's coat. You don't see houndstooth like that anymore. That's really great. No, this is, we got, almost everybody said yes and nobody said no. Is that what I'm seeing in the paperwork? Okay, I think it's a slam dunk.
Was that a question?
Nope. Well, it was a question.
Okay. Any other questions? Questions? Councilmember Rosati? Oh, okay. Okay, seeing none? Hold on, let's see. I now declare the public hearing closed. The council will now consider adoption or denial of the resolution to renew the T-Bid. All right. Feel free now.
Thank you. You want to make the motion?
No, I was going to make a comment.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Just really quickly, I want to congratulate staff and everyone on the T-Bid Committee. Thank you for coming down tonight. I know you guys are very important to the city of Burbank and important to our industry, so I applaud you, continue your hard work, and I know we're not going to talk about it for 10 more years, so I'll see you 10 years from now. Thank you for everything you do.
All right.
I was just going to say, it's unusual that a program is supported 100%. So, it, the report was excellent. I think we're doing good work, and I just wanted to thank you for all the outreach.
Thank you, Councilmember Rosati. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I, I thank you for the, the report and the work on this item, and I wanted to say to the T-Bid, I haven't had a chance to visit you at your meetings at this, yet at this point, but I've seen the work that you do in the community, and I see the events that you have supported and put on, the advertisements, both internally and externally, about all the things that are happening in the city. A lot of awareness around what's going on in the city is because of the work that you do. And I know that these types of efforts are, take a lot of, take a lot of time and resources in addition to everything that you're already doing with your businesses. So, I just want to acknowledge the work that you've contributed to the community, a lot of what our reputation and what people come here for is because of what the T-Bid does. So, I think it's really important to acknowledge that, and I'm happy, I'm happy to, I'm happy to support this, to move forward, and looking forward to seeing what the bid will do in the next 10 years. I'm sure you've got some innovative ideas that are just ready, ready to go, coming up on the docket. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The only thing I will say is, boy, like, about a couple weeks ago, I told the folks of the chamber that we had our last hearing, there weren't that many, there were no comments, and I more meant it, like, you know, there are no comments, which sometimes is a good thing, but they would not take that for an answer. They had to come and show up and say some great things about the T-Bid, which I love. Thank you for being here, and thank you for representing. Like you heard, you're doing great work, and we're excited about it. And with that, I will take a very eager motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution of the council of the city of Burbank declaring results of the majority protest proceedings and a renewal of the Burbank Tourism Business Improvement District T-Bid.
Second.
Great, we have a motion and a second? Let's take the roll. Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Takahashi?
Enthusiastic, yes.
And Mayor Perez? Pull. Just kidding, yes, I had to. Yes.
And I say I wish all our public hearings went this way, very smooth, and got 5-0.
All right, motion passes. Here's to another 10 years.
Yes.
All right, we have two reports to council this evening. After staff's presentation, the city council will proceed with in-person public comment only. Speakers will be allowed to speak on the item at the conclusion of the presentation, as long as the speaker has not already spoken on that item during the first period of general public comment. Please be sure to submit your cards now, as no cards will be accepted once the comment period begins following staff's presentation. Our first report to council tonight is an approval of a final project alignment for the Chandler Bike Way Extension Project, and I welcome Mr. David Criskie, Assistant Community Development Director, to present the report. Welcome, Mr. Criskie.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. Again, my name is David Criskie, and I'm with the Community Development Department, and the purpose of tonight's item before you is for the city council to consider approval of the final alignment for the Chandler Bike Way Extension, and I have a presentation to go through that project. So your, our staff recommendation for you this evening is to approve our recommended alignment for the Chandler Bike Way Extension Project. Your approval would allow us to move forward and continue and finalize the project design to then move the project to construction. So, ever since, even during the groundbreaking for the original Chandler Bike Way, staff has been looking at ways to extend the project. We've been looking at this critical extension for over 20 years, and in fact, the original genesis of the Chandler Bike Way back in the 90s was to actually complete it all the way to the downtown Burbank MetroLink station, and this is important because that allows cyclists to get onto transit and go throughout the region. It allows cyclists to also access other improvements on the east. It allows cyclists to also access other improvements on the east side of Interstate 5 to connect the bike network between east and west. And so, this project alignment and its objectives is to do just that, is to extend Chandler the remaining 6/10 of a mile between the end of the route at Mariposa Street to the downtown Burbank MetroLink Station. It would connect many of our other off-street bike paths together: the Chandler Bike Way, the San Fernando Bike Way, which was going to be under construction next year, the Burbank Channel Bike Way, which opened in 2020, as well as the bike network that is existing and is planned in the downtown section of Burbank to be connected by our Front Street Cycle Track, which was opened about a year and a half ago. It implements several of our long-range plans. The Chandler Extension has been in the general plan, it's in the Bicycle Master Plan, it's in the Complete Streets Plan, it's a connection that has been known to us for a long time as a gap to be closed, and so it also closes a gap in a larger network, regional network, which I'll show you in a minute. And the problem that this has had, why we haven't been able to close this gap sooner, is because unlike the Chandler Bike Way that's built today, the segment east of Mariposa is still used by trains, and so we have to account for that minor detail, which is a major detail. And so, just to show you the local and regional importance of this, this is a map of our fully off-street, or fully protected bike route network that we will have in place in the next few years. This includes bike paths like Chandler and Burbank Channel, it includes also Class 4 Protected Bike Lanes, so these are bike-path-like facilities that are along public streets, along the side of public streets. The Avion Project installed our first fully protected bike lane, it's separated from cars but uses city ride-of-way, and there others are planned as well. The First Street Two-Way Protected Bike Lane is also a project that will be coming before you for construction in the next year. And so, this network shows the slow but steady build-out of that fully protected system, and shows in red the connection we're talking about, kind of knits all that together. So, you can see major protected north-south and east-west spine of facilities, and this is kind of the Keystone in the middle of it. And I also mentioned, this is part of a regional path that will eventually extend all the way from Chatsworth to Long Beach, and that's using the Orange Line Bike Path, the Chandler Bike Path, the Burbank Channel Bike Path, Glendale's Burbank Channel Bike Path, and the LA River Path. So, these are small connections, and they're hard to build, but they are very, very important, and this is one of the last gaps in that large network of regional paths. And so, the project we have before you for consideration makes that final connection, and like I said, it doesn't do it in the easy way to use the Chandler Ride-of-Way because the trains operate on the east end of the rail spur. But what it does is uses a combination of the metro and Chandler rail ride-of-way and city streets to get us there as well, and also uses the San Fernando Bike Path along the Burbank Channel, which I mentioned is going to be under construction next year, that will look very much like the Burbank Channel that we already built to connect everyone to the downtown Burbank MetroLink Station. And so, that route specifically will extend east from Mariposa Street along Chandler, use the railroad ride-of-way and the Chandler city street ride-of-way, then would turn south on Victory Boulevard to Cypress Avenue, and then would turn east on Cypress Avenue using also a combination of city street and unbuilt city street, and I'll show you that in a minute as well. And the reason why we are able to contemplate this now and not 10 or 15 years ago is because in the interceding years between the old Chandler, or the current Chandler Bike Way and the proposed extension, the transportation profession has come up with new tools for how to extend the protectiveness of Chandler, but use city streets rather than dedicated ride-of-way. And so, these are photos of examples of how the Chandler Bike Way Extension might look, different segments of it, and also shows you what we've built today in Burbank to also provide that. So, the upper-left corner of that image is the Hollywood Way Protected Bike Lanes, and so you can see the cycle track is in the middle, the sidewalk, pedestrians are on the left, and the street is in the right, fully protected and separated from traffic. The other images show what a two-way Chandler Bike Path would look like along a city street in various forms. So, the lower-left shows a bike path along a street crossing a driveway, the middle image shows a protected two-way bike path close to a city street, and then the one on the far right is another example on a larger city street with a cycle track and a sidewalk together. So, while I can't show you a 3D rendering that's very good, I'm going to show you something in a minute that's very illustrative, but this shows in real life some projects that have been built in other cities in California and in the United States that implement this idea. So, getting into just a little bit more detail about the segments, so the first segment on the west, heading eastward from Mariposa, is easy to visualize because it's basically extending what we already have, it's taking the Chandler Bike Way Bike Path concept, past Mariposa, crossing it at Mariposa like we do the other streets on Chandler, and taking it about two blocks to Lomita Street in just the same configuration that we have with the Chandler Bike Way today. So, the Chandler roadway is on the south, and then the railroad ride-of-way is regraded, tracks removed, bike path installed, and landscaping installed. At Lomita Street, this is where we begin the portion of the railroad ride-of-way where the trains are still operating, and so we can't use that active rail spur. And so, we're proposing at Lomita Street to transition across Chandler at the Lomita intersection into the south side of Chandler by widening the city parkway to create that bike path and sidewalk configuration that mimics some of the photos that I showed you earlier. That crossing at Chandler would be done at the intersection, we are proposing to add an always-stop at that location so that all cars will stop, and bikes, pedestrians, and cars all proceed in the ride-of-way rules just like they do at Keystone, at California, at Pass, so it's going to be very similar in nature. And then they will get up onto the widened parkway and travel along Chandler to Victory Boulevard. Again, this is my 3D rendering, we do not have, the consultants are looking on the design, not so much the rendering, so bear with me on this.
Good job. That's good.
And my staff is out on leave and vacation, they really can do good work, and so it's stuck with me, so you get this. But proceeding south onto Victory, the cyclists would cross Victory at the Chandler intersection and then proceed south in a bike path again along the parkway, similar to some of the exhibit on the right, the photo on the right of the slide I showed you. This would require reconfiguring the street to remove parking on the northbound side of Victory along, between Chandler and Cypress, and this is required because you can see the very large power poles there, they are a fixed object, and also we have to preserve pedestrian space for travel, and so we are proposing to narrow the roadway, shift the lanes over a little bit, but maintain all the travel lanes, remove the parking lane, and install the bike path. And so, this would continue south again from Chandler to Cypress. And then at Cypress, cyclists would turn east along the north side of Cypress, and if you're familiar with that area, Cypress goes into industrial area here, there are industrial businesses and Varney and Moss that proceed south from Cypress, but they tee in at Cypress. And on the north side, there are just a couple of driveways and a long frontage of the side yard of the old stock lumberyard, and so we have city street ride-of-way there that partially is a parkway that we're going to reconstruct into the bike path. And again, we are going to be moving the curb, we would be moving the curb to enlarge the parkway into the street, again, by removing the parking lane to provide enough space for the bicycles in the city ride-of-way. And again, as you can see those large power poles on those views, that's another constraint we have, which is why we are proposing this design. And then at the turn where the Cypress turns into Varney, this is the city street that is unbuilt, it's been unbuilt since the late 1800s, but it is nonetheless a city street that we have control over, and we would be using a portion of that city street to take the bike path further east to the Burbank Western Channel where it would connect to the San Fernando Bike Way. And again, the San Fernando Bike Way in this location will look like Burbank Channel, so you have the channel, landscaping, lighting, and the bike path, and that would turn you south to Magnolia, under the bridge, and down to the MetroLink Station by the AmeriCold So, in terms of project development, we have procured a consultant for design and design services, we have done all of our data collection, utility mapping, we've surveyed the whole area, we have developed a conceptual alignment and a 30% development plan, and that's where we've stopped, and we are here tonight to check in with you before we proceed to ensure that you are in alignment with our proposal, or to give us any feedback, as well as to allow the community to weigh in. We have also are performing environmental review on, this project is federally funded, so it's subject to both the California Environmental Quality Act and the National Environmental Policy Act, NEPA. For CEQA, we have made a determination that this is an exempt project because it is modifying and adding bicycle facilities in existing city ride-of-way. For the NEPA review, it will likely be a similar exclusion with some additional analysis done, and for NEPA, Caltrans runs the CEQA review and approval process, and we're working with them. And again, NEPA is needed because of the federal funding. And we're also exploring opportunities for some green space, so at the end of Cypress, there's a little bit of area that we may have an opportunity to put in some green space and a little refuge area, and also where the bike path leaves the Chandler ride-of-way onto Chandler Boulevard, there's still a portion of the rail spur that is not used, and we're looking to landscape that and make that look nice as well. So, the bike way will turn off, but the portion of the rail spur would be possibly landscaped. As you can imagine, there's a lot of constraints in threading the needle through this alignment, and I talked about some of them, and we'll talk about them, but these are the major ones that we've identified. First are several street tree and utility conflicts in the ride-of-way. I mentioned the large power poles, there are also street trees in the way, and so we're navigating through how to get around those obstructions. The on-street parking removal, this is a big one in terms of trade-off, I think, because we have a hard time preserving some of the parking along this stretch and allowing the bike way to go through, and so particularly, I mentioned the south side of Chandler, the east side of Victory, and the north side of Cypress. And then the last big thing are the driveway crossings, so the great thing about Class 4 Protected Facilities is you can use your ride-of-way and still get the protection that you get from a bike path. There is a little bit of a downside from that, is that you're still working with the existing street environment, so there's still curbs and driveways and intersections, and so we're dealing with that. We think we are threading the needle around the worst driveways. For example, the driveways on the west side of Victory going into the shopping center are really big, which is why we chose to put the path on the east side. There's ironically one more, I think, one more driveway on the east side than there is on the west side, but those are so low-utilized driveways that we felt the trade-off was better. And then also the one on Chandler, those are pretty moderately used, and we're going to really need to look to see to make sure we can have that crossing done safely, so we definitely acknowledge the driveway crossings, and it's a major constraint of the project. I also want to just go over, and I alluded to this earlier, we have been looking at this for a long time, and we have, over the years, looked at a laundry list of alternatives, so the proposal and the alternative we're proposing tonight is not something that we haphazardly developed, we've really looked at this six ways from Sunday over the years. We originally looked at modifying or removing the rail spur, that's a big deal, likely not possible. We've looked at going along the side of the rail spur, there's significant regulatory problems with putting a bike path so close to a rail track. We've looked at going, using larger city streets and going down Magnolia, or going down Victory to Magnolia, more parking impacts with that, much more expensive to do it safely, you're really introducing bikes into a major intersection, so we kind of dropped that one too. So, where we've landed with this alternative is really, we think, the best way to navigate this facility through this urban environment in a way that's similar to Chandler, but uses the city ride-of-way and avoids the rail spur, which, again, we think is going to be pretty hard to mess with if we wanted to go that route. And so, that's why we're proposing the alternative that we are this evening. The project budget is $3.3 million, $2.6 million is a Metro Federal grant that we got back in 2013, it was made available to us around 2019, and we have been spending some of that money with the design effort. The local match for that grant is Metro Measure R Transportation Funds that are allocated to the city, so no general fund with this budget. Part of the design process, should we be allowed to go forward, would be to work on the design, get it closer to 100%, and then update the cost estimate. I believe we will still, we will be short, and we'll need to come back with some money. We think it can be done with transportation funds also, and so we are prepared to do that. This grant, again, the way it was managed by Metro and the time involved, we think that the money that we asked for in 2013 is going to be a little short for this, but we think that the gap can be covered. But I wanted to clarify that upfront, that we will probably need to bring a little more money to the table for this. We are, as I mentioned, we are in design right now, we expect to have design concluding in the middle part of 2026, or actually towards the end of 2026, and the important thing is we need to be at least asking Caltrans to start construction and spending our construction money by the end of 2026 for a construction start in 2027. And we are running up on a grant deadline, so the other reason we wanted to check in with you, because if we are given the permission to move forward, we're going to be going very fast to get this done, and so we want to make sure that we have alignment. And so, we potentially will have this open right around Olympics, I don't want to say 28 by 28, but it'll be in 2028, and will be open for use. And so, with that, again, our staff recommendation is to approve our alignment option for the Chandler Bike Way Extension and allow us to proceed with final design, and this is our contact information, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Krisky. We're going to have the Olympic cycling on our Chandler Bike Way? Okay, we have, before we get to questions and council deliberation, I have two comment cards. Since there's only two folks, each will have three minutes to speak. First, we have Eddie Polan, followed by Corey Mensing. Welcome, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council members. I'm Eddie Polan, I am speaking on behalf of Strong Towns Burbank tonight in support of the Chandler Bike Way Extension Project. Now, this council has been asked to deal with many divisive and charged issues this year, this is not one of them. This is a fully-funded infrastructure project that's going to take a crown jewel of Burbank and make it even better. It's going to open it up to the rest of the community, the hillside, the ranch will be able to enjoy Chandler Bike Path safely now, it's going to bring, and it will make bicycling safer in our city, and it's going to bring landscaping and parkland to really an underserved part of our community. So, there's a huge, huge upside on this. And so, Strong Towns Burbank enthusiastically urges a yes vote on this with the request that staff consider widening the protected bike path by two feet along the path, which will make it even safer, these are kind of well-traveled streets, and will also serve to help calming traffic. And then also wanted to note that the Transportation Commission suggested that we install bicycle priority lights at Mariposa and also at Victory, because again, there's a really, really high conflict intersections, and we really need to be really careful about putting bicycles in conflict with cars. You know, the 6-point miles, the 0.6-mile extension has been in development on the drawing board for 20 years, and the council tonight has a chance to take it off the drawing board, bring it into, let's start breaking concrete, let's start making it happen, and our community will be that much better for it. So, thank you very much for your consideration, and once again, we urge a yes vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next and final speaker is Corey Mensing.
Hello again, council and staff. I don't have a Kim Kardashian photo this time, sorry. Actually, I wasn't going to speak on this, but I did find the read very interesting, and I ran into Vice Mayor Takahashi last night, and it reminded me that this encompasses the intersection where the bus stop was added that I'm very proud of. So, that being said, the difference between now and the summer when I apply for Transportation Commission is I have a car, and I got that car through the state program D cap, I'm very grateful. So, just to add some context, I went to Aldi last Tuesday and Saturday, could not find a parking spot, now I'm that guy. Like, suddenly I'm that guy. So, Tuesday was Veterans Day, and Hobby Lobby might have had a special or something, there's no spot, so I circled for 30 minutes and then turned my blinker on and did get a spot, but Saturday I did park on Chandler where those spots are going to be removed. But I am the self-proclaimed prophecy, I said I was going to be a multimodal transportation user. I walked here tonight. I left my car at home. So, that being said, I still advocate, I still advocate for space for people over vehicles, even though I'm a driver now, I said I won't be frustrated because it is a lot faster, especially grocery shopping. Again, learned a lot. Again, learned a lot. I had no idea the rail spur was active. Definitely didn't walk over there anytime. And also I support like immediate fixes, like as much as I'd love to see like the beautiful Chandler bike path go all the way to downtown, I support these quicker fixes that improve the quality of life right now. And I met with David Chriskey and Karen Pan early this year. We talked about that intersection and how it wasn't designed with the grocery store. So the needs have changed. So it's important that we change the infrastructure as that goes along. That being said, quasi-related, I would just consider for future, I've had issues as a pedestrian, et cetera, any surface lot in Burbank, so that's one of them. Obviously I couldn't find a parking spot, but like every Ralph's in Burbank, very difficult to enter as a pedestrian. So I'd support if moving forward, we try to limit surface parking and have like stacked parking structure and those more expensive housing opportunities. But I think that's an area where we're really struggling is where we have surface lots that are very massive. And then finally along that route, so you're still going to have to go over the Magnolia Boulevard Bridge. And I, I'm not following this so closely, but I used to walk from my house up the hill to Aldi yet groceries carry them over the bridge. And like a wind would knock me over into the freeway, or at least I thought it would. So again, like short-term planning, like besides a bridge replacement, like could that fence be higher like Burbank Boulevard where the fence is like over your head? Yeah, I'm supportive of all of that, but again, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. And, and I have to tell you, I don't think anybody's made the city attorney laugh like that. I believe it was the comment about becoming that guy looking for parking. And I feel you because I too am that guy. All right. Now that, that those are two comments, we will now go to the council for questions. Council, do you have any questions?
One commenter talked about priority lighting. I know there's a couple places in the city where we have the buttons to cross are where the bicyclist is. We've included those in a lot of areas. And then in some parts of the city, we now have pedestrian pre-lights where the pedestrian gets, you know, a number of seconds before the light turns. Have we considered any prioritization for lights for bicycles at all in the city yet? And, and is this maybe an opportunity for that?
So generally, we do follow the current signal timing standards that are prescribed by the state, which do make it that we have bike detection at our intersections and that if required or if necessary, we can give bike timing improvements so that a bike, you never have a quick green light where a bike can't make it across. You'll have at least some time to allow slower vehicles like bicycles to get across. And in other areas where bike paths interface with vehicle lanes at signals, we do have bike, actual bike signals. So on Chandler, we have actual bike signals. Burbank Channel, we have bike signals. The Avion raised protected facility, we have a bike signal going southbound at Tulari. The First Street Protected Bike Lane will have a bike signal phase at First and Verdugo. So yes, we do implement that. There is basically one signalized intersection in this project, which is Victory and Chandler. So we, we're not at the level of design where we're looking at signal timing and phasing, but some of those options are on the table. I will say another constraint about this project, another tricky part of this is that signal is tied into that rail freight spur. And so we, we, we may be limited on how much we can do with that signal before we trigger something massive like a grade crossing or some other major improvement. So we are very cautious to not touch that signal too much, to not trigger more improvements that would be beyond the scope and cost of this. But, but yes, to your question, we are looking at those sorts of things to help get cyclists across the signalized intersections.
And just to follow up to that, one of the speakers mentioned Mariposa, that crossing. Have we looked at that?
So yes, we've looked at Mariposa and we've looked at Lomita, where the two crossings will be occurring. At Mariposa, we will be, at this point, we will be implementing a crossing that's similar to the other stop-controlled crossings of Chandler. And I know over the years, people have talked about how that's confusing and there's conflicts and, and things and I, you know, riding it myself can see that. However, in terms of the safety data, we don't see a problem with them. It's, it is a little confusing, but maybe that's good because people stop and look. So we are proposing to basically implement that same standard at, at Mariposa. And then at Lomita, there was a, I think there was a comment or question about, and the commission brought this up about some sort of pedestrian flasher. We specifically did not do the pedestrian flasher at a, at a non-control location because we thought even with the pedestrian flasher, if you didn't have a full stop control activity, it wouldn't be as safe as it could be. So for Lomita, we are, we are leaning on the always stop. We are also planning to construct curb extensions at that corner, so that will shorten the crossing distance and the exposure where bikes and peds can get across the street. So instead of 31 feet, it's going to be 26 feet and it improves the visibility for everybody. So we think that will slow down, it will slow down cars, everyone will need to stop. It will have good visibility and will have shorter crossing distances. So that's the technique we're proposing for the Lomita crossing.
Thank you. There's another follow-up.
About the Lomita crossing. Yeah, I had some concerns about that Lomita intersection because it looks like it, it jags down, so coming, and I could be reading this wrong or visioning that intersection wrong, but you come out of Chandler and you not only have to cross Lomita, but you have to cross Chandler too, to get down to the bike path, right? So you have to kind of go across. So is the bike going to go across and then across or is it going to go diagonal?
So the graphic is misleading. What is actually going to happen is the bikes are going to be on Chandler and they're going to actually pass Lomita in the right, in the railroad right of way. And then they're going to turn and just cross Chandler on the east side. So it won't be, it won't be a step. It won't be a two-step process.
Oh, okay. So it's only one crossing.
We can take, yeah, we can take the bike path like beyond Lomita, just beyond Lomita with no conflict and then cross them on the east side.
Okay.
So the graphic doesn't show that, so I apologize, but that's our plan.
All right. There still doesn't have to, there still does have to be a little bit of a, like kind of a Z shape.
There'll be a turn. You'll be, it'll be a tight turn, you'll cross, and then you'll have a tight turn to continue even tighter, to turn to go eastward.
And that'll be a stop sign similar to the other.
It'll be an always stop. Chandler both directions, Lomita both directions, bike path.
Great. Okay, thank you.
That was helpful. Thanks. Counselor?
I just had one, one last question, sorry.
We hijacked his line of questions, so.
Have we, have we set, I know you said we haven't gone to the full design, but have we set the width of the bike lane yet? I know we have state minimums on what the automobile travel lane needs to be. Is there any wiggle room to add a foot or two or like, like what are we looking at there?
So for the Chandler portion in the right of way, we're going to mimic what's out there now, which is two four-foot lanes for bikes and a six-foot pedestrian path for pedestrians. In the Chandler portion, in the Chandler portion from Lomita to Victory is the most constrained in the whole corridor. We have to do everything minimum. So we have to do four-foot, two four-foot lanes for the bikes, five-foot sidewalk for the pedestrians, two-foot buffer between the bikes and the street, and a 26-foot wide street because of the fire code. So the fire code requires that minimum width on a, on a street that is served by fire. So there were some comments, I think, regarding shaving and moving lane widths around. Well, Chandler, that is the minimum. Everything is minimum there, so we, we really can't, we don't really have any play. On the Victory side, we are looking at four to five feet of, for each bike lane, and that's still under discussion. And the buffer could be anywhere from two to four feet. So that's still in flux. We are, of course, removing the parking. We are shifting the whole roadway about four feet over. It's just, it's a restripe, but it's moving the lanes over. And so when you transition the lanes back to the existing, if we push it even more, it's going to throw other things off in the road, again, the signal and other things. So we think we've kind of thread the needle on the maximum width we can provide to the bikes while still maintaining the travel, the travel lanes and the progression through there. So we have a little bit of wiggle room on that stretch, but not a lot. And then on Cypress, again, we're, we're back to kind of the minimums, four-foot bike lane in each direction, two-foot buffer between the bikes and the cars. And then in this case, it's a 30-foot wide street. There were some comments about ingress and egress for larger vehicles with the, in the industrial uses. We have to take parking. We can leave parking on the south side. We need to leave 30 feet with the parking lane for fire. And we're actually kind of enlarging the turn between Cypress and Varney to, mainly for fire trucks to make it. That was a number one design standard we looked at early, but also for the larger 53 footers to be able to turn. We're going to verify the 53-foot trailer turn template based on the input that we got tonight, just to make sure, because I know, again, it's an industrial area. And so we'll verify that that all works. But again, it's going to be down to the minimums there as well.
And I guess my last question is, when final design is ready, it'll come back to us for approval?
So it'll come back to, unless the council has other ideas about this, it would come back for your approval to award a construction contract.
When would that be?
We're looking in probably early 2027. So we're going to, we're going to ask permission from Caltrans to spend the construction money. That is our deadline clock. That's by the end of 2026. And then there's the, doing the bid, putting the bid package together with purchasing and doing all that. So I would say first quarter of 2027.
And will that go to IOB or Transportation or both before it gets to us?
It would just be the city council. And I will say, at that point, we don't have a lot of, there's really not an opportunity for the public to weigh in and get into the details. We're really built, you know, do you want to spend this money to build this project or not? That's what that is intended for.
Counselor Azadi?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I spent a lot of time on this, actually, about five or six consecutive days. And actually, I want this to succeed so bad that I just couldn't even sleep at night. So I can't imagine what you went through because you had a, you didn't have a lot of options, I can tell. So, so I want, I want you to take me through the bike path. You're going to stay on the path on Chandler, past Mariposa, right? And then from that point, from Lomita, you're going to cut down across Lomita.
Across Chandler.
Right.
Just past.
So why is that portion of the railroad not active and the other portion of the railroad active? And when we say active, are we talking about trains are coming?
Yes.
Trains are coming down, those tracks that are all?
So, so yes, very infrequently, but they do, and they have the right to. The, the rights for the tracks to be operated by Union Pacific. And without getting into details, the railroad is owned, the right of way is owned by Metro. They bought it, actually with the city participating back in like 1990 for the purpose of rapid transit. It was going to be BRT, quite frankly, but we, we pushed that off. And so in the interim, the city was allowed to build a bike path. So Metro owns the right of way, but the Union Pacific still has operating rights for freight trains with that, in that rail spur area where the tracks have the Y back by stock lumber across Victory and to a point, maybe 150, 200 feet east of Lancers. You'll go out there, you'll see these metal poles that used to have a sign that said end of the track, but they're gone. But that is the point, there's a mile marker there where the track rights end and the, and the freight trains are no longer able to operate. And so that has been the, the problem with extending Chandler is, is dealing with the fact that the freight trains can still operate on that segment.
And where are they going? So this, there's a technical definition that allows them to preserve their use and they use it just that much. Like they literally back a train across Victory.
I understand.
Touch the point. For what, at what end? For what, what would they need that strip for?
So they have, they have one customer, stock lumber. I have not seen operations there in the last few years, but I, in the past, they used to deliver wood there. And then there is a little spur siding in between the Y, kind of by stock lumber, that they had stored rail cars there before. Again, not in the last many years. So they use it and they periodically assert their rights to continue to use it. One option we looked at earlier on was to use a, it's a federal process and working with Metro to basically kind of force them to divest the, that, abandon that track. And quite frankly, even if they abandoned it just to Victory and we could close that crossing, that would be great, but it is a very complex process. It involves a entity that is not very responsive, Union Pacific. And it was very cumbersome and burdensome to do that, that it would, it would take a very long time and may not be successful.
Okay. So let's, let's continue on the, the path. So we're crossing Lomita and we're going east towards Victory. Is that an elevated path?
Yes.
How high?
Six to seven inches, the height of a curb. So it's level with the sidewalk and above the street, above, above the curb.
The buffer is, how big's the buffer?
Two feet.
And how, and it's six inches, seven inches?
It'll be, it'll either be landscaped in a very narrow way or it'll be kind of a raised pattern surface of concrete that'll, that'll be distinct from the bike path.
And then we got multiple driveways into the big shopping center we're crossing.
Two driveways.
Right?
Yes.
And then we're crossing Victory and we're headed south?
Yes.
Going against traffic?
So it's, 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 it's both directions, yes, with and against traffic. There, the buffer is going to be anywhere from two to four feet. It'll also be raised. It will look, again, similar to the photo on the right that I showed and also similar to the front street cycle track by the Metrolink station, except that it'll be up in, on the sidewalk level.
you mentioned maybe narrowing Victory?
Narrowing the, narrowing in terms of taking the parking lane and then shifting the remaining lanes over.
How close will the cars be from the buffer?
It'll be a 11 or 12-foot lane next to the curb. So if you think of a, of a lane of traffic without parking, so kind of like Hollywood Way by Avion, it will look like that. And then there'll be a two to four-foot buffer, probably closer to four because of the higher speeds, and then, and then the bike path.
Okay. And then we're going down Cypress?
Yes.
Right? And there's an embankment all the way down. Is any of that being touched or used?
So we are proposing a, about a third of the way down and the grade gets really steep. We will be proposing to build a retaining wall about two feet off the property line in the city right of way, so that the, where the bike path is in the remaining part of that dirt, plus the extension of the parking lane, that will be a flat space for the bike path.
So we're gonna be able to utilize that hillside with a retaining wall?
Mm-hmm.
And then what about the telephone poles?
It will, the, all of the facilities will be, the, the bike path will be to the south of the telephone pole. They will have to, the bike path will have to meander slightly to get around a couple of those poles. But it, it will be south of the poles. And there'll be some landscaping between the edge of the bike path and that retaining wall, probably about four feet.
Okay. And then at the end of Varney and Cypress, and I tried to get in there, but I couldn't get in there. So there's a loading dock there?
So, yes.
Is that ours?
So the loading dock was installed by the adjoining property at, at Varney and Cypress in a city street. So it is an encroachment and that is in the process of being removed for this project and also to restore the city street and remove that encroachment.
And then the business that's on the south side, is that going to be open to the bike trail? Is there going to be a wall? How's that going to look?
So the owner of that business spoke with you earlier this evening. He's still in the back.
Mr. Dvorak is still there?
Yes. He, we are working with him to remove the encroachments and we are also working with him to come up with an arrangement to maintain some access along the side of his property. It is in the city street, so that will need to be, there will need to be an agreement for that, but we are working with him to accommodate that.
So when you say a city street, it's going to be a bike path and some street?
No. So it is a city street, meaning it is a legal city street. We are using it for the purpose of a bike facility. There will be some space left over.
So no one's driving in there?
No one will be driving there.
Okay. And then the one thing that was missing, I thought, from the report was, now what?
Yeah, what do you do? Yes.
And I really, I really wanted to see that connection. And I really, I really wanted to see that connection. Do we have that anywhere? Can we see that?
We can, and we can provide that. And this is the, and the reason it's confusing is because, again, because of the grant fund, grant funds, we've been cobbling together for all of this. It is for a separate project, the San Fernando Bike Way, that is going to take the path from that point at Cypress down the, the west side of the Channel area, between the Channel and the edge of the.
And are you going south or north?
South.
So you're going south towards Magnolia Bridge and then what?
Then you cross the frontage roads and go under the bridge.
Okay.
And then connect to the east side of AmeriCold, the cold storage.
Yeah.
And get you down to the station.
Okay.
It's a, you're up and around and down and through. It's definitely weaving and threading the needle. But we, we think it can work and will be a good connection.
And my last question is, I know that you sent out mailers outreach. What was the response?
Probably half a dozen, a couple of emails, one phone call. We mailed a thousand foot radius around the alignment and set about, I think, eight hundred and thirty cards out. So it was all property owners and tenants.
So when you say a thousand feet, is that a thousand feet from Mariposa and Chandler or a thousand feet from Victory and Chandler or a thousand feet from Varney and?
A thousand feet from that, from the whole line. So you take the segment of the whole project and you do an oval around it, a thousand feet.
And what was the response you got back?
Like a half a dozen.
And what did they say?
We had some homeowners on Beechwood that were in favor of it. A business, an owner of the properties just north of Chandler and Mariposa that had, wanted to bring to our attention some drainage issues that he wants to make sure we're aware of, where drainage from his property is going onto the railroad and how are we going to deal with that? A gentleman who lives in the area and once owned property along Victory, but doesn't anymore, was concerned about the parking. And then I think there was maybe one other homeowner or property owner that was in support. So I want to say maybe even four, there was only four responses from the mailer.
Do you find that unusual?
No.
I mean, we're talking about losing hundreds of parking spots. So I find it really unusual that we didn't get anyone saying anything.
Yeah, it's, it's about fifty parking spaces.
It's hundreds. Because if you look at the turnover at Aldi and all the other businesses, where, let's say it's every two hours. One parking spot could mean five customers per spot.
Number of cars served, yes, we have more than fifty.
So it's not just fifty-eight, it's those, those spots represent many. So I, I find it unusual, especially, I, I've driven this five times at different times of the day, and they were jammed. Like, like the gentleman said, the, the, the. Aldi was jammed, that whole shopping center was jammed, everything along Cypress was jammed with parking. So I'm just curious, I mean, I'm just shocked that we didn't get anyone to protest it.
So, um, the, I think the parking that we're removing, it's definitely a trade off that the council needs to be, to be comfortable with or not. There's no way to get around the parking removal. So I, and I understand that parking is a major issue. So I definitely, all of our parking is kind of mixed. I think during the day, it's used by those businesses, but off hours, it's vacant. And also, I will say that the park on the north side of Victory towards Chandler, where all the driveways are, you'll notice the, it's like one spot between each driveway. We need to look at that regardless of this project because I was shocked at how close that parking spot was to the driveway aprons. And whether those should be there. But there are probably five or six spots below that, that yes, are utilized quite a bit during the weekday, maybe less so on the weekend. And then Cypress, same thing, weekday, it's moderate to heavily used. During the, during the day, probably the employees of the, of the businesses. And then over the weekend, it's either not used or it's used by these other nuisance usage. We've had complaints coming through us and through police about semi trucks parking there that we've had to address with some overnight parking restrictions. During COVID, there was some other, maybe homeless or other things. So that is also mixed. But, um, and, and those parking spots do have offsite parking. It is, it is jammed up, but they do have it. But I'm not going to sugarcoat that the, that the one major trade off for this alignment is the, is that street parking removal. There's no doubt about that.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Questions? Councilor Ramon's.
Thank you. I've been listening to everybody talk and I'm on the same page. I mean, first of all, I, I'm very excited that we're finally, after all these years, we are here today to talk about the connection. And I know that you and your staff have spent many, many, many hours working on this and trying to come up with the design. I have a couple of things and not so much questions because you, you've been answering the questions about parking. Yes, there's fifty-three parking spaces. And I drove over there, just like Councilmember Rosati, because I'm visual and the maps were a little bit difficult. I wanted to understand. And I drove it today, as a matter of fact, and I stopped and I looked around. There were a lot of cars parked today. Chandler, every space was taken. Cypress, there was in one empty spot. It was, cars are stuck together in that street. The, on Victory, I can understand it, it's a bit of, I, I noticed the, the one car and then you have a driveway and. But I know they're being utilized because of the businesses in that area. So, um, of course, my first question was, is there anything else we can do to make this happen and not take as many parking spaces? Because my first concern, where are we going to put these cars? Obviously, if they're being utilized, they will continue. It gets worse, it doesn't get better. We have now that most, the companies are requiring their employees to go in more than one or two days a week. I mean, there are almost four days to full time now. The issue is parking. Where do we put all these cars? And then my second issue is, and you've been talking about it, there's so many driveways that I was just looking at some of the cars going in and out of the driveways. And it's really, it was terrifying, like, how are these bikes and people? And we're going to have them walk through, ride through these driveways. I mean, I know I see the pretty green stripes that people hopefully slow down. So I was really concerned, in particular on Victory and on Cypress. Looking up where the stack of wood was right above there and I'm looking where the, you know, the bikes will be and the people will be walking and so much happening in there, it is scary. Like, am I trading off a bike lane there and compromising safety? It, it's really tough because on one hand, I definitely want this, I want to make the connection. I want to finally say, yes, we have the connection from here all the way there and we did it. But on the other hand, we're dealing with the parking and we're dealing with safety. You know, you're the engineer, but just as a person looking on the outside and going, you know, too many, way too many driveways. Cypress looks really scary, like the turn and the cars and cars coming in and out. And the gentleman said it earlier, they have business that cars and trucks are going to be going in and out. So how do we, is there any chance, any chance that looking, that you can go back, brainstorm about how do we make it, you know, how do we address parking? Where is, where are these cars going to go, first of all? And, and I do, you know, Councilmember Rosati just asked, because that was on my mind as well, like, did anybody complain? Like, I didn't hear from anybody. I think Lancer's owner called today or somebody from that restaurant. And then, you know, I appreciate you coming tonight and speaking about it. You know, do they really know? Do they know the impact? And then when we started this project, I think we, we didn't have Aldi. We didn't have Home Goods. We didn't have Hobby Lobby. We had Toys R Us.
And you're saying Ollies did not have the same draw as today's activity?
Toys R Us, it's Aldi's, right? Oh, Ollies, no, no, no. Yeah, 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 yeah. Oh, yeah, that's, well, I've been, I've been here nineteen eighty. So I've seen a lot of, no, we didn't have, I mean, I used to drive there even to Toys R Us, the parking was empty. Now I drive around.
Don't sleep on Toys R Us.
Hey, I love that place. I wish it comes back. But Aldi's is attracting a lot of people, Home Goods, which is great. It attracts a lot of people and, and Hobby Lobby. So parking is stuff to, to, you got to go around and around a couple of times to find a spot. So I, at first I said, okay, maybe we can use the parking from Chandler. They can park in the parking lot. You know, I, I wasn't really concerned when I read the report. But then you move down to Victory and you move further down to Cypress and then you go, okay, now what? What do we do with all these cars? So what do we do?
Yeah, this, and this is again, if the, if the parking is a, is a concern and is a, not priority, but is a, a, a thing we want to really try and keep as much of, it will be difficult to build it the way we are proposing. I mean, with, with unlimited money, anything's possible. You start looking at removing or moving all those utility lines and moving the parkway elements around so that you can maybe shrink things up and, and provide some parking. I think the Chandler parking is absolutely, we have no choice about it because of those constraints with fire and the narrow right of way. The Victory, the, the spots between the driveways, we, like I said, we, we need to take a look at that. I don't honestly see why those are there. The other ones, you know, maybe we meander the bike path, we could try and carve out something, I don't know. The Cypress, again, without the option of moving power lines around, we can't really mess with that cross section. I will also, though, throw out that it's not a great response, but this project will make the Metrolink station parking lot walking distance to Cypress, longish walk, about a third of a mile. I measured it between a third and a half a mile between the Metrolink parking lot and the middle of Cypress by walking distance with the, with the project. So if it is a severe concern, we could, and if we are concerned that we need to offer spaces to the businesses or the employees, we could look at ways to manage the Metrolink station better. And it is a long walk from there. But unfortunately, those are the only other realistic options I can provide you to deal with the, with the offset of the loss of the street parking.
And see, I see creativities happening as we speak. I mean, offering perhaps the employees, if it's a short walk, you know, I, I understand everybody wants to park where their business is and just walk into the business. But there is got to be an alternative or something that we can do, at least to offer that in case there is an opportunity to walk or maybe, you know, they can park there and walk or carpool or do something where they can drop off employees and pick them up. But to completely take away twenty-six spaces on Cypress, again, I wasn't as so concerned, even though I know it's still going to be an impact, but on Chandler, because, okay, I know Corey mentioned he looked for half an hour and ended up parking on Chandler, but you know, okay, at least we have that big lot. Hopefully we'll find parking there. But between Cypress and Victory, it really now puts a greater impact on the area. Because there's a lot of businesses in that area. So yes, I'm going to be trading one for the other. And then are they going to be spilling over the streets, you know, residential? We already have been hearing about lack of parking in our residential area because of the ADUs. And things are getting worse, they're not getting better because we have more and more ADUs and more construction, you know, with multiple cars and we don't have spaces. So I, I, again, I support the project. I want this to go through. But I need to have some creativity and solution, both in the safety aspect and also in the parking to be able to provide an option or an alternative. Maybe it costs us, I don't know if you looked into how much would it cost to replace the power lines? And then do an underground, you know, service, because that's what they do now. Maybe we team up with water and power and see what they can do. So we're not taking as many parking spaces. So those are the things that I am personally looking for, not to stop the project, but to be able to give a relief to that area because I don't want to cause also other issues in that area where in the future, we're going to have to figure out what we do with all these vehicles that people need to park. So those are really my concern, not so much about the project. I looked at it in detail. I've been listening to everyone, you know, the questions and asking and, and I'm in support. I just need something to be able to feel comfortable to say, yeah, of course, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Ramon's. I'm going to go to Councilmember Rosati who has a question, then I'll go to the vice mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is there a sidewalk on the south side of Cypress?
Yes.
I know we're talking that this is a protected bike trail. But wouldn't it be more protection if there was parked cars between the, the trail? So what I'm getting at is, why don't we just use the existing sidewalk that we have?
So for Cypress sidewalk, we would definitely have to at least widen it. Because I think it's, I want to say it's only eight or ten feet right now.
Right.
So I guess we could, there could be an option. There could be an option where we put the path on the south side, but you're still going to be limited by the overall street width that you're going to have to push the curb a little bit north and the parking. And now we're getting into the narrowness again with fire and access and the, and having two lanes of traffic where you're still, I think, running up against, you, you, you may be able to save a few feet, but you're still not enough feet to keep the parking.
Okay. I'm good, thank you.
Oh, and.
Yeah.
And we've got lots of driveways and two street crossings, which are not insurmountable, but you're introducing more crossings as well on that alternative.
Yeah. I mean, that whole area is, it's, it's not even commercial, it's industrial.
It's industrial.
I mean, when I was there, there was bulldozers and eighteen wheelers. And like Mr. Dvorak said, I was there one day, when, I think it might have been the same day when he was trying to make that turn. He could not make that turn. And, you know, there's a lot going on in that area. So it's, it's a little dicey. I understand this is, there wasn't a lot of options.
There are not a lot of options, but I get it.
I'm with you. I understand.
Oh, I will say, I think the fifth comment we got from the mailer was somebody who lives on Moss in a house and also has a business. And he was in support. But he did talk about some of the parking activity and the other stuff in there, but he was in support.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Just briefly on the, the parking issue, I have a couple of questions on that. The parking lots that are on Victory on the east side in front of those businesses, there's three separate little parking lots in front of the business, right? Are those public parking lots? Are they specifically only allowed to be parking in the, for the business there?
That's offsite parking for those businesses.
Okay. And then I also noticed a little farther down south on Victory, there's a big, the big five is right there. I'm just wondering if, if those parking lots get very full, if it's possible. I'm just wondering if, if those parking lots get very full, if it's possible to negotiate some spots for the Cypress folks who, if they do get displaced in their parking and there isn't a spot for their work, that they maybe could park in the big five parking lot or in that, those little parking lots that are close enough that they could still walk? Um, and maybe just partner with those businesses, that might be something to negotiate too?
So we, um, we, we've done that a little bit in Magnolia Park. It is definitely a council, uh, parking management principle, which is to try and, uh, better share the off-stri, off-street parking that's maybe underutilized. So we have, um, we can't force it, but we can always, um, bring people together and, and bring property owners who may have excess parking, uh, and, and, and let them understand that they can offer their parking, uh, for use off, um, you know, for, for off-use purposes. Um, it's tricky because you're competing with free parking on the street and an off-street user is gonna charge something. Um, but we could look at that. I think also, and back to Councilmember Mullins' point, you know, maybe the, maybe the response is to move forward, but be mindful of the parking impacts in that neighborhood. Maybe we do a little bit better study of all of those streets in there. And again, I mentioned, we have now the MetroLink resource will be within decent distance. Maybe not of Cypress, but also of the side streets. Maybe we can do some sort of parking management for that little neighborhood, um, as a, as a way to help offset that.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I would be curious to see, I mean, I have a sense of, I, I think of, we all have a sense maybe of what kind of parking's going on on Chandler and Victory, but Cypress is kind of a mystery to me of like, who might be parking there? I'm gonna guess employees, but you know, don't know for sure. So it'd be kinda nice to know like who's actually being impacted there. Okay, great. Um, okay, so a few questions on the route, um, you know, on page four with the full green, red, blue, you know, full, uh, path. For the blue portions, uh, that are on Front Street and on, uh, on First Street and on the, uh, um, other little blue portion, some of that's done and some of that's not, right? It's like, cause I, I think that there's a part on Front Street that's done. There's a part on Verdugo that's done, but the other parts on the west side of that area are not done, so.
Yes, so that map is a, what, the network as of 2028. So some of those projects are in design, are in process, in design or are gonna be under construction. So, uh, Front Street is in-street protected from, uh, First Street, under the freeway around the corner to the MetroLink station.
Right.
But soon to be open, very soon, uh, is a raised protected portion of that from Front Street up to Burbank, which is what, seven, seven Front Street was required to build.
Right.
So that's gonna be opening soon. And then First Street is going to be in-street protected also. Uh, that's a project that's in, um, we're, we're at hundred percent design. We're preparing big documents will be coming to council. And then the other blue is, um, Hollywood Way. That's the Avion, raised protected in front of Avion, in-street protected elsewhere. Uh, the airport terminal is required to actually extend the raised protected southbound. Uh, so you'll actually have it down all the way to, uh, Avon, like by the entrance to the ritzy.
Okay. And a little blip, that's like between Cypress, or, uh, let's see, after Cypress on the Burbank Channel towards the MetroLink, that is, there's nothing happening yet there.
That's the little San Fernando Bike Way that's, uh, in design, in final design, and we hope to start construction next year. It's the little spur of the other big part up by the railroad crossing and the, we used to call it the scar of the Empire Interchange, where we're gonna be landscaping the railroad right of way and building a bike path down from LA. Uh, that's San Fernando Bike Way.
And then the, I'm referring to the blip after, um, right, right near the MetroLink station? That's south of the MetroLink, are we talking about that? The little bit, that's, um, little blue, kind of?
Oh, oh, that's, that's, uh, the map is a, is not an, is a little bit of an error. That's actually should be going down to Verdugo. Uh, it doesn't go, sorry, it doesn't blip up to, um, that would be Magnolia. It's, that's San Fernando connecting to the station. So it's San Fernando Bike Way.
Okay, okay. Just to understand like what's actually in works and what's not, okay. Um, and, uh, so for that little, the reason why I asked about that little section is because while I really do appreciate Cypress going all the way through to the channel, um, it, it, I'm trying to imagine how that's gonna be designed. And also it's, from what I can tell, it's going kind of between buildings and behind buildings and down the channel and through down to the MetroLink.
Yes.
And what little, I've biked through the MetroLink down Verdugo and just using the other side of the bike channel path. It does have a lot of kind of secluded sections that biking alone is okay if it's bright and it's, you know, you know, but if it's underneath the overpass and stuff. So are there any safety thoughts about safety precautions and making sure there's enough lighting and that there's cameras and all sorts of things that?
Yeah, yes, we are. We didn't get into it, but, um, this project and San Fernando Bike Way, um, lighting is gonna be a big part of it. Um, we're gonna have, um, on both of them, like more PED level lighting, like that's on Burbank Channel. We're gonna have that up, further up on the, on the little part north of Magnolia. And then we're gonna have, um, period, we're likely, it's again thirty percent design, but we understand that we're gonna have to offset the concern about safety. We, I, we think lighting is gonna be our main, um, tool. And we're just gonna have the, that low-level PED lighting, the, the candlestick lights in between the Cobra Head overhead lights. We're gonna have those along the whole stretch.
Okay. Yeah, in particular concerned about the section on the Chandler bike, uh, channel behind the building, right there.
Turn and down there, yes.
Um, that's not just the lighting, but also maybe a mirror to be able to see down easily or I don't know what, but just so it's not easy to get secluded back there and trapped and then nobody's seeing you, right?
Yep, understood.
Okay. Um, very, but by the way, I'm really excited about this connection. I'm just imagining in my mind, hopping on my e-bike, going down Chandler, coming up to council meetings. I know it's, you know, a few years in ahead, but I have that little dream in my head to do that. Um, all right. So for, uh, the section along Victory, um, I know this is just a quick rendition that you put together, but, um, you mentioned earlier to Councilmember Rosati that there's, I, I think you said there's a four feet space between the car travel lane and the bike lane? Is that, is that what you said?
We are looking at anywhere from two to four feet. The, at the thirty percent level, we're still, um, playing with the dimensions because of those power poles and because of those, um, the lane shifts that we have to make to the road.
Okay.
But we're mindful that if we're gonna have a bigger buffer anywhere, that that's probably the place to have it.
Yeah.
Um, so that's definitely, um, in the, in our minds with the design.
Okay. Yeah, cause I mean, I know that's, it's hard to, to get it to scale here on these pictures. But when you have a, a bike path where you're going in two different directions on the same path, kinda like the Chandler Bike Path, um, there's always a chance if the bike lanes are close. Chandler Bike Path has the walk section, which gives a little bit of extra width. So if you're, you know, going, uh, passing somebody going in the opposite direction and you need a little space, you can kinda go out a little bit to get around them. But when, if there's not a lot of space on the outside to do that, so I guess, my, you know, my number one concern obviously is getting pushed into the street. We don't want that to happen. But also to be able to get around a passing bike. And so depending on what that barrier is between the bike path and the street, it might or might not allow a little bit of wiggle room on both sides to kinda get around each other. So just making sure that there's not an accidental handlebar, handlebar clip or, or something like that when you're passing each other, um, right next to all those cars. My first thought was to have some sort of barrier, but because of the driveways and because barriers are like conceptually good, but if you're getting clipped by another bike and there's a barrier, you can still hit the barrier and your, your, your pedals can hit the barrier. So they can kinda cause a little bit of danger there too. And you don't wanna clip your pedal on a barrier and then end up in the street or something. So I, I kind of, um, half and half on the, on that. But I understand, um, not having it, but having safety features to make sure that no one gets pushed into the street. That's the last thing. Um, let's see. Someone had mentioned, the Commissar had mentioned about there being a bus stop along the Victory, um, section. Where, where along that section is that bus stop? Do you, do you happen to know?
Yes, um, the bus stop, um, that the Speaker referred to, that, uh, helped advocate for, um, is at Chandler and Victory. Uh, southbound is, um, the southbound bus stop is just south of Chandler on Victory in front of Lancers.
Okay.
And then the northbound stop is, uh, just, also just south of, uh, Chandler on Victory. The southbound stop, uh, is not really affected by this. It will remain.
Right.
Um, the northbound stop will likely have to be moved to the north side of Chandler. Because right now where the bus is stopping, that's where the bikes are gonna have to kinda swing and turn to get to the signal. And we're gonna be modifying the, um, the crosswalk.
Okay.
To add the width for the bikes and the PEDs and kinda adjusting it.
Okay. But I'm thrilled that there's a bus stop right there at that intersection. That's a great for transferring on the Victory buses, that's great. Yeah. And then speaking of that intersection, I know Councilmember Anthony had asked you about it. And, um, just wanna kinda reiterate the importance of having a bike and pedestrian-only crossing time. I know that might be difficult to negotiate with that particular light, but, um, it's so dangerous when cars are going through an intersection at the same time as so many bikes. And I'm, I'm gonna guess at some point when it becomes used, utilized, it'll be a similar population as people who cross Buena Vista and, um, Hollywood Way on the Chandler Bike Path. And that's a lot of bikes sometimes. And the fact that there's no other cars going at the same time makes that crosswalk incredibly safe for both pedestrians and bikes. So I'd love to see that same level of safety at the Victory crosswalk, however we can. And to prevent going from Chandler to Victory, prevent right turns at all when the bikes are going across. So there's no, no right turn through that intersection while the bikes are crossing, if that's possible. Um, let's see, I have a few more. Let's see. So along the portion of Chandler between La Mida and Victory, there's two driveways into the Aldi parking lot, right? So there's one on the right next to Aldi and one next to Lancers. I'm wondering if there's any way just to consider moving, bringing it down to one driveway? I don't know what the population of in and out of those driveways, but if we have one driveway, they can still access the entire parking lot. And then there's one less driveway to potentially have interaction with bikes. I don't know if that has been considered or thought about, but any reduction we can have driveways would be great.
So I understand that, um, and, uh, appreciate that comment. And I think, and in terms of a physical type of act, physically making the change is probably not too hard. Um, it will definitely become a private property, uh, situation, uh, that could be a, like a, like a taking.
Sure.
So, and this, this project, this project's timeline and budget do not have, um, allowance for, uh, land acquisition. So I, I appreciate the comment, but I don't think, and it, under this budget and timeline, that we're able to do that.
Okay. Well, after, you know, if, if it's something that can't be done now, as we, if, once we build it and we're looking at these kinds of interactions, just kinda keep an eye out of, maybe that's an option down the road.
Also not a huge bone, but if this property does redevelop at, at some point and it's been identified as a, a redevelopment site of some sort since the Burbank Center Plan in the nineties, um, then our complete street subjective design standards would be triggered. And we would, these constrained areas, um, we would be able to allow the property, if it ever redeveloped, to, um, to make it better. So.
Yeah. Yeah, ideally, it would be great to have all the egresses on Victory and have none.
At a signal. One driveway at Victory at a signal is what I would recommend if we were ever.
In the future, future dreaming. Um, so since we're gonna have so many driveways through the process, it's one, two, three, four, five, six, I think seven total driveways along the way. Um, both bikes and cars will need to be aware of it. Are we thinking of having signage and making both the cars and bikes really aware of to be careful? Any thought about how to mitigate in that, from that way? I mean, there's a lot of driveways to have signage, but I would think it would be important to have a, an awareness around that.
Yeah, we, I don't have a, an answer for specifics yet, um, but we have identified that issue at the thirty percent level um, as something that we need to, um, apply as many treatments as we can, um, within, you know, within our public right of way. And also is something the Transportation Commission mentioned in their discussion of this project a few months ago. Um, so, um, it is on our mind, it is on the engineer's mind, and we will, um, we will keep that at the forefront as we're moving forward in the design.
Great, thank you. And I appreciate in most of these ren, uh, renderings that there's a lot of green markings. I think those green markings on the sidewalk really draw attention to the fact that it's a, a bike lane. So even if that, we don't wanna put a sign at every single corner, having the very bright green and maybe even, um, um, reflectors per night so that both the cars and the bikes, when they're, with the bike lights will reflect so that it's clear that there's something there to pay attention to, right? That'd be great, okay. Um, I think that's it, but let me just double check, I didn't miss anything. Um, overall, I'm really impressed with this project. I'm really impressed with everything that's gone into it. I know there's still a lot of details to na, to navigate here, go through, but the community is overwhelmingly in support of this project and cannot wait for it to be built. So it's, you know, whatever happens tonight, hopefully we'll move it forward and then hopefully we can get it going really quickly. Great, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. To that point, we did receive lots of emails in support, um, of the project. So that was very great to read. Okay, any other questions? Councilwoman Rosati?
Well, PD have complete access to the path all the way back beyond Cypress?
Yeah, we'll have, um, it'll be wide enough for a car to get back there. Um, and we'll probably have a bollard like we do on the other paths, but they'll have access to it. Um, but, uh, Police Department, um, we have a interdepartmental review process, um, at, at every, at thirty, sixty, ninety percent design stage. And so all the departments are weighing in on the design. Um, and so we will, including PD.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, I don't have any questions because my questions were answered throughout the process. Um, now, staff's recommendation is that we, uh, approve the alignment and then approve, um, approval allow staff to complete that final design. What is council's pleasure? Councilwoman Anthony?
So I don't, I don't need a huge amount of, of public input on, on this going forward, but the final design, uh, we're not spending any of our general fund dollars, so I don't need IOB to look at this. But we have two council members that are liaisons to the Transportation Commission. We have seven expert transportation commissioners who I don't think need to see the full one hundred percent design, but I would like to have this get to them at least before it comes back to us for a final vote. And I know that's calendar-wise and scheduling, it's a little tough. So even if it's close to done, if it's like eighty or ninety percent done, I would like them to just give it a once-over. And you can have a more robust discussion at that point. We can invite folks who've in, in the neighborhood to that meeting. Um, and having just one more final look at that final design before it comes to us, uh, I think, I think would be beneficial. We can have, ask more questions, we can, uh, uh, drill down into it a little bit more. So that, 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 I would prefer that rather than just, okay, we'll give them direction, then they come back to us and that's it. That's the only final choice we make, so. I mean, is that even doable? Can we do that? Can we, timeline-wise?
So timeline, in terms of a, maybe an update and a check-in, yes. Um, you know, later in the design, as I mentioned before, there's not a lot of opportunity to make drastic changes. So is, if your expectation is just a check-in and an update from your commission on the status?
That's all I want, just in case they catch anything, anything, yeah. That's what I'd like.
And I, I would just agree with that, just because we've had issues in the past where our Transportation Commission lets us know directly that they would have liked to weigh in on something. And unlike some of our other commissions where things have to go there, they're not exactly a commission that's designed that way. But it would be helpful to hear their input, especially since they have had quite, and it's not a bad thing, they've had quite a lot of opinions on bike things. And, and they are quite the avid bikers, so it's helpful to hear from, from that group of folks, um, if, if they have thoughts. And, and just the update would also give them, if they're listening now, which I bet they are, the opportunity to communicate to council their thoughts. And if they would like to send, as often commissions do, a letter or something with their thoughts on the update, that is a good time to do that before, to Mr. Krisky's point, we get into the, the meat of the project where you can't make those changes anymore.
So I, I just think it's important to note, and, and Mr. Krisky has, if not said it overtly, intimated, the further we go, the less flexibility we have to change. So as long as both the commission and the council understand that there will be very limited ability, but, but I think it's, you know, warranted to the extent that there's, there is some ability to remedy on oversight.
I leave it to Mr. Krisky to decide when the point is of when it goes to the commission. But, but early enough to where it's on a hindrance to you to change anything and not late enough to where they tell us they didn't get it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, and I, I also wanna make sure that some of our conversations and concerns are incorporated to the change or the updated design or, or different ways of how we're gonna, uh, look at the safety, all the, the information that we have had on safety, addressing those concerns and the parking as well.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Everything I've got, you know, driveway conflicts are a concern. Intersection movements, particularly at the Chandler intersect, uh, Chandler-Victory intersection is a concern. Um, a, I guess a, a plan for, um, dealing with parking particularly on Cypress. A, I guess a, a plan for dealing with parking, particularly on Cypress, is a concern. And then I think the overall, I guess maximizing the widths and the buffers where we can, particularly on Victory, is a, is a concern. Safety and lighting, PD access, those are the main messages I got. And I've, I've been taking notes, so that is what I've heard.
Can I add one more thing to your memory? And then also working, further working with the area, the businesses in that area.
Yes.
Thank you. But you did a really good job summarizing everything without looking at your notes.
Councilor Rosati.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I mean, I want to love it, I, I just don't love it. I think it's really disjointed and not very cohesive. I honestly think that we need to do better outreach and under, and have those businesses understand what they're losing. I have a lot of concerns about the driveways. You're supposed to, when you're pulling out of a driveway, you're supposed to stop, everyone knows, before you hit the sidewalk, but people don't. And then what if someone pulls out and there's a bike coming and he wants to go and he can't go because he's waiting for a car and you get, and there's just so much there. I, I think there's, honestly, I think there's a lot of, I think there should be some more work done before we move this forward. I know everyone's excited about it, I want to be excited about it. I've had a lot of sleepless nights trying to figure this out in my head. I think we do need to do a better respond, a, a job reaching out to those businesses, whether that's door-to-door, I don't know what that is. But I can tell you that we haven't heard from the majority of those people until it's gonna be too late and they're gonna come here and say, what the heck happened? So I just want to make sure that everyone understands. We are in such a delicate economy right now. And all these businesses are gonna lose their parking. It's just like one more thing that, it's one more hit that they're gonna take. And I know it's 50 something parking spaces, but it, it equates to hundreds. So I, I think, I don't think we're taking that into consideration. I don't think we're taking the seriousness of removing all that parking. Because every day I was there, all those spots were really slowed down and just take a better look at this to make sure that it's safe and that everyone's vested in this, businesses, pedestrians, everyone, so. Thank you.
Councilor Anthony.
Are we able to send out like postcards to the area when we have a, a date set for that Transportation Commission? And I think that might be one opportunity for them to weigh in. And then we can send out another batch when it comes back to us for the final design. I mean, is that, because I don't need to have a, a separate public outreach for everybody, but to Councilor Rosati's point, getting more than just two or three individuals in the area to make some kind of comment, i- is that doable?
It's, it's totally doable. We could do it for the Transportation Commission, we don't usually, but we could. I wouldn't do it at bid award. I think it's a call to question, do we want to do it or not? And honestly, if, if the council has reservations at that point, I hope that that's brought to us sooner because it's a lot of work to get a, a project.
Well, then can we do it for the, for the transportation meeting? I would like that.
I'd be okay with that, to David Krisky's point, at that point it interferes with the bidding process.
Right, right.
So I, I would be okay with the Transportation Commission would give them an open forum, to Councilor Rosati's point, an open forum for these businesses to share their comments, to share their thoughts and active due diligence outreach from us as, as a city. Because I, I hear your frustration, I, I do. But I know this is also looking, you know, and I think about our businesses, but I also think about our community who is begging us to do something with this and who, the way they're seeing it, the way, the way I'm seeing it is, we got the money in 2013, I understand how difficult some of the agencies can be to work with. And then how that, that, there's a whole reason that approval process didn't happen till 2020 and why it came back to us in 2025. That makes sense to me, sitting on this dais. To a lot of our community members, they're just seeing, council has had money since 2013 to do something about this and they have not done anything for over 10 years. So I do want to give them a response and I, I do think staff has done their due diligence in the portion of looking at alternate routes. I hear you, my favorite one, if I could, I could have teared down the straight path to go through that railroad space. And I know, I know, we can't.
No, I'm just telling you, that was, we spent years.
Oh, I know, I know.
Looking at both sides of Victory. I just, I just want to say one thing. I spoke to two people and just, just said to them, what are your thoughts? And they think that we're going all the way down Chandler. They have no idea about all these cuts and going down Cypress. They have no idea. And I'm just saying, I, I don't think a lot of people really understand. When they hear the Chandler Bike Path is gonna be extended, they're thinking, they're thinking it's going, going through the railroad, I mean, go through the, 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 the wood, whatever, the, what is that place called now? Lumber Yard, I can't remember the new name of it, it's just changed hands. They, that's what they're thinking. They're not understanding, and that's what they relay back to me. And when I just said, hey, what are your thoughts about this? They have no idea that all this, you know, meandering is going on.
To, to that point, I hear you and I know it's, it's really the avid cyclist community that, that knows where this is going, right? They, they, they're the ones who have emailed us, who have expressed the interest in approving the plan. So I understand, and I say that as somebody who's not a member of that community. So that's why I, I understand the need to move it forward. But again, to Councilor Anthony's point, I would feel comfortable moving it forward so long as we have that forum of the Transportation Commission for businesses to come share their thoughts and that Mr. Krisky knows there are a couple other, you, you read the laundry list of things to look at before really coming forward with a final project. Councilor Moens?
Yeah. I think it's also important, looking on paper and seeing the maps and going like this, completely different when you drive there and, and see it firsthand because you start going, what? How is it gonna go in Cypress? So I'm just gonna throw it out there, encourage that council, if you have the time, drive by and look at it. I also encourage a lot of our bikers to walk it or drive it and see what it looks like. Because all these changes or all these recommendations that we're having input, whether it's safety, the driveways, the parking, this is all to make it even a better project. I don't think, you know, I think we're all in agreement that yes, this is wonderful, we need it, we need to move forward eventually, but there's nothing wrong of doing an enhancement and providing that feedback to staff so I know they can go back and start thinking again and do it. So, you, you know, we're all in agreement. I don't think, I hear Councilmember Rosati against it, none of us here are here against it. We just want to make sure that what we're doing is not gonna backfire in the future with businesses coming back and saying, what have you done? That's about it.
For the sake of the hour, are we comfortable then moving it forward with the recommendations provided to staff?
Just briefly, as somebody who has biked that area and has had, gone across Victory, down, down Cypress without anything, I mean, sorry, down Chandler without anything and then down Victory and trying to get across, that while this is not ideal, of course, of course, of course, as a biker, I would want it to just be straight across and easy. And that's why I have these concerns about safety. But compared to what it is now, which is a hot mess and very dangerous for me, as somebody who is very careful, I can't even imagine somebody who's a kid, that this is, I think that this is as good as we can get it. I, I really, I think that this is a, I mean, obviously the concerns we have and then we have to mitigate the safety issues and the parking and all that. But with, you have, as you put it, Mr. Krisky, is that you went, looked at it every which way and Sunday or something like that? And so there's, there's no rock you did not turn over to see what you could do. So I believe that this is, while it's not ideal and there's issues, this is a, as good a plan as we possibly could get in this moment, based on what we have available to us. And I am, while it's not ideal, I would love to have this implemented so I can get across Victory to that other side of town and then eventually to MetroLink Station and then eventually downtown. It would be a fabulous way to finally be able to get across the ding-dang tracks and the freeway.
Is that a motion?
I, sure. Oh, my gosh. I'll get to a motion, yes, thank you.
And I will second with the friendly amendment to include the recommendations that we provided to staff and this going to the Transportation Committee for review and for public comment from the businesses.
Amendment's accepted.
Great. So you have a motion, a second, let's vote.
Councilmember Anthony.
Yes.
Councilmember Mullins.
Yes.
Councilmember Rosati.
No.
Vice Mayor Tagahashi.
Yes.
And Mayor Perez.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Item passes. And now we move on to our second report of the evening. And I will, before announcing it, I will pass it on to the Vice Mayor. As those of you who are here know, I am a nursing mother and I am well above time, so. Thank you.
All right, let's see. So the second report to council tonight is review of the general fund's financial status as of September 30th, 2025. And we welcome Ms. Jennifer Becker, who always provides us with wonderful presentations of material that can otherwise be quite dry, yet is always entertaining or at least very informative and easy to follow. Please welcome Ms. Jennifer Becker from Financial Services and please present the report. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Vice Mayor. That was quite the introduction and good evening, members of the council. I'm Jennifer Becker with the Financial Services Department and I'm here tonight to present to you a review of the general fund's financial status as of the first quarter of fiscal year 2025, 2026. So as part of this report, I'm gonna go over a brief summary of how we ended the 2024-25 fiscal year for the general fund. We'll then review our first quarter general fund results for both revenues and expenditures. As a reminder, the city's budget is based on a fiscal year that begins on July 1. So the first quarter results we're gonna review tonight cover the period from July 1 through September 30. We'll provide the council with a pension funding update based on the latest reports we've received from Calpers. And then we'll take all of that information and roll it into our year-end financial projections for the general fund for both a recurring and a one-time basis. And we'll conclude with a longer look at the city's general fund five-year forecast. So let's start with 2024-25 year-end results. At the time of budget adoption, we projected a fiscal year 24-25 year-end spendable balance of just under $21 million. Our actual balance at year-end was nearly $49 million. There were several things happening that pushed up this cash balance, but it's largely due to the city receiving or recognizing some large one-time revenues for items like grant payments and reimbursements. Additionally, Burbank's year-end recurring revenue results ended up 1.5% above projections for the year, although as you'll see in a moment, the results by category were somewhat of a mixed bag. On the expenditure side, our year-end budget savings was roughly $3 million higher than the amount we projected after factoring in carryover appropriations that were approved by the council in August. We typically assume a year-end savings of about 2% of the recurring budget and we ended up with a savings of about 2.8% for fiscal year 24-25. So after fully funding our formal reserves at the beginning of the new fiscal year, our July 1, 2025 starting cash balance was at $44.6 million. And it's important to note that the city is in the midst of our annual financial audit, so these numbers are not to be considered final until such time as we receive an opinion from our independent financial audit firm of LSL, Inc. We anticipate returning to the Audit Committee and the City Council with our fiscal year 24-25 annual comprehensive financial report prior to the end of the calendar year. Okay, so here's a first look at general fund revenues as of the first, as of the end of the first quarter. The table here shows our actual results for the prior year, which is 24-25, our adopted general fund revenues for the current fiscal year, which is 25-26, our revised projections for this year, and the actual revenues received through the first quarter of the year, representing July through September. You can see that even though we're about a quarter of the way through our year, we've only realized about 9.6% of our revised projected annual revenue. This is actually to be expected based on the natural timing of our revenue receipts. At this time last year, we had also received 9.6% prior to any revenue adjustments. And as I mentioned on the previous slide, while our actual recurring revenues in 24-25 came in $3.7 million or 1.5% higher than our revised projections, there were some notable categories which did not meet projections. Given those revenue results from the end of last year, combined with new data we have for the current year, we are recommending revising our projected fiscal year 25-26 revenues across several categories for a net total decrease to our forecast of $2.8 million. That's where you could see highlighted in that red box on the slide. Now, while it's definitely a notable decline and something we haven't experienced in recent years, overall, it represents a little less than 1% of the original projections we provided during the budget process. So let's take a closer look at some of those specific general fund revenue categories we're adjusting on the next few slides. So, and we'll start with the bad news, and that is regarding sales tax. Our fiscal year-end 24-25 sales tax revenues came in at 4% under our revised projections, with second quarter receipts representing April through June down 10.9% after adjustments. LA County was also down 1% and the state of California was largely flat by comparison. The difference for Burbank has everything to do with one specific category, which is auto sales. A, a major retailer in town has closed their sales center and is no longer selling vehicles here in Burbank. Unfortunately, this loss of recurring revenue appears to be permanent. And as a result of this, as well as other economic factors, we are forced to decrease our fiscal year 25-26 projection for sales tax by about $3.4 million. General consumer goods, which is the city's largest sales category, remained flat from the prior year despite continued inflation impacting the price of goods. Given the uncertainty of the economy and our political environment, I think consumer confidence is just low right now and folks are just generally being a little bit more cautious with their spending. But on the flip side, restaurants and hotels continue their strong performance in Burbank with several new eateries in town boosting both the casual and fine dining categories as well as strong growth in the area of catering and food delivery. And lastly, we are very fortunate in here in Burbank to have our transactions and use tax, or TUT, that was approved by the voters with the passage of Measure P. TUT is not impacted by auto sales in the same way as traditional sales tax because those revenues are based on the destination address of the sale rather than the point of sale. That's good news for Burbank in this case, as this revenue stream was up 3.4% for the quarter. So transient occupancy tax, or TOT, is a tax charge on hotel room nights here in the city. And this is another revenue stream that didn't quite meet expectations, coming in about a half a million dollars short for the 24-25 fiscal year. We saw a bump in hotel stays immediately after the Eaton fire, but our local hotel occupancy rates in recent months are trending a little bit behind where they were in 2024. A report released by Visit California shows an 8% year-over-year decline in hotel stays statewide for the month of August. So this isn't just a Burbank issue. The wildfires, threats of immigration raids and uncertainty over tariffs have all contributed to a decline in international visitors. Our forecast assumes that trend will continue for at least the next six months or so. And then we expect a nice bump in tourism in June as visitors arrive for the FIFA World Cup. So given all these issues at play, we're adjusting our TOT forecast down by just a little bit, about $200,000 for the current year. So now it's not all gloom and doom in our forecast today. There are a couple bright spots that I wanted to point out. Service charges exceeded projections last year, so we are recommending an increase to this current year forecast of about a half a million dollars. There were several revenues that performed well to help support this increase, the most significant being our emergency medical services, or EMS, revenues, which were largely driven by a higher volume of calls for services. Park and recreation programs also experienced an overall increase in revenues despite the loss of the Starlight Bowl this summer. And this was mostly due to the expansion of their very popular day camp programming. And lastly, we've experienced a substantial bump in revenue related to film permitting and safety services, which increased by 150% for the first quarter of 2025 compared to the first quarter of 2024. So this is a nice indication of recovery in our entertainment industry as well as the local efforts to support the California Film and Television Tax Credit Program. Another revenue stream that's performing well is our parking fines. So this is a result of the implementation of our parking management program in the downtown and the related improvements in the city's parking enforcement efforts. Given that this is a new program, we were quite conservative with our initial revenue estimates. And now that we have some data, we're comfortable adjusting our projections up by about $300,000 in the current fiscal year. So the last category I'll review tonight is property tax. Now, although we are not making any, or recommending any revisions here, it is our largest general fund revenue stream, so it's important to pay attention to what's happening in the local real estate market. it is our largest general fund revenue stream, so it's important to pay attention to what's happening in the local real estate market. Current year, property tax revenues are based on assessed values which are determined in the prior year. In November, we received our updated assessed valuation, which is applicable to 25-26 revenues and our citywide assessed valuation increased by 854 million or roughly 2.6% from the prior year with general fund-related revenues increasing by 3.7%. This is well above the CPI cap of 2% that is dictated by Proposition 13. So some of the drivers of which account for the assessed value increase include the reassessments of some industrial or commercial parcels, parcels, excuse me, as well as several large residential developments. Transfers of ownership also contributed to strong gains in commercial and residential values throughout the city. Offsetting these gains was a substantial decrease in Burbank's unsecured property values. This is a predominantly result of dropped assessments of private aircraft at the Hollywood Burbank Airport, resulting in a 14% decline in this category. Unsecured property is a pretty volatile category by virtue of these items being able to move locations, so it's not unusual for Burbank to experience these types of swings in value from year to year. Burbank's residential housing market continues to remain stable with a single-family home price in Burbank for the third quarter of 2025 selling at a median price of $1.3 million, roughly the same as it was a year ago. Economists expect little to no growth in home values in the coming months with the recent Fed rate drops maybe starting to have an impact on mortgage rates and the overall housing market in mid to late 2026. So now let's move on from revenues to expenditures and take a look at our general fund expenditures for the first quarter. Overall, our expenditures for the first quarter were at 25.7%, which only slightly exceeds the general expectation of 25% for the three-month period into the fiscal year. The difference is predominantly due to non-departmental expenditures which are at 52.5% expended due to several large one-time payments and contributions that take place at the beginning of the year. This includes the 5.9 million one-time pension payment made to Calpers as well as our $4.7 million annual contribution to our infrastructure fund in accordance with Measure P. So before I finished up with our year-end and five-year forecast, I wanted to take a moment to provide you with our latest updates from Calpers as the city has received a new set of pension actuarial reports since the adoption of our fiscal year 25-26 budget. So Calpers has had two strong consecutive years of net investment gains, well exceeding their expected rate of return of 6.8%. They finished the 23-24 fiscal year with an investment gain of 9.3% followed by a gain of 11.6% in the 24-25 fiscal year. Now, while that 2025 year has not yet been factored into our rates due to the timing of these actuarial reports, the 2024 returns did move the needle just a little bit with the average funded status of the city's three pension plans going from 74% to 75%. We expect to see even more improvement next year when the 2025 returns are factored into our reports. Now, however, Calpers, and there's always a however with Calpers, they're in the midst of wrapping up their most recent experience study, which they do every five years. This study examines all kinds of historical data and makes recommendations for changes to Calpers' assumptions that they use to calculate liabilities for their member agencies. The study was actually presented to the Calpers Board for a second reading today and includes recommended increase to assumptions for both wage growth and inflation. Assuming the study was adopted, this will increase our UAL cost by probably an average of 1.2% beginning in the 27-28 fiscal year, so that will offset some of those expected savings from the 2025 investment returns. Burbank's total unfunded pension liability as of June 30, 2025 is at $435 million across the city's three pension plans. Now, the chart here shows our Calpers costs for each of the city's three plans for the current fiscal year and the next three budget years. The normal cost rate is displayed as a percent of total payroll and the UAL or that liability cost is shown as a flat dollar amount. Two things to note here, the city's normal cost rate for all three pension plans continues to decline each year. This is due to the continued incorporation of Peppera employees into our workforce, making up the larger share. Over 60% of our Perzable workforce now falls under the Peppera plans. Offsetting that pension rate savings, of course, our UAL payment will increase by about $4.7 million from this year to next year and that's despite the 9.3% Calpers rate of return. Our liability payments are partially based on salary history, so as wages increase for our employees, so does our pension liability for those future Burbank retirees. The chart here shows us the performance of Calpers' investment returns since 2000. 25 years of history shows us some significant swings in earnings, which is reflective of the overall economy in each of those time periods. What's significant here is not the individual peaks and valleys, but really the long-term trends in their performance. Since the year 2000, Calpers has averaged a rate of return of 6.7%, which is just slightly under their current expected rate of return of 6.8%. So those actuaries that work at Calpers actually really know what they're doing. If you were to remove the worst performing year that occurred in 2009 following the housing market crash and the best performing year, which was 2021, which was that rebound from the pandemic, the returns would actually average over 7% across this time horizon. Of course, Burbank has continued to invest available one-time funds towards paying down the city's pension liability over the past several years in an effort to mitigate future increases to Calpers' costs. As part of the budget adoption process in June, the City Council approved a $7.5 million additional discretionary payment to Calpers. The city made that payment in July and shortly thereafter, Calpers provided the city with an update of our revised UAL payment owed for 26-27, which would account for that July payment. The total citywide recurring savings generated was $1.3 million with 1 million of that savings directly benefiting the general fund. As these extra payments have been a very effective strategy in lowering the city's recurring pension costs, staff is planning to bring forward yet another multi-year pension funding plan to the City Council as part of next year's budget adoption process. This should help offset future budget deficits until such time as we start to see our UAL cost naturally decline, which is projected to be around the 2031-32 fiscal year. So given all that material we covered, let's take a look at the general fund's overall financial position for the year. And we'll start with our projected general fund balance. Based on our adopted revenues, our recommended first quarter revenue adjustments, which we just presented earlier, and our adopted budget appropriations, we're now projecting a year-end recurring deficit of 1.5 million for fiscal year 25-26, which represents approximately half a percent of our recurring budget. As reported earlier, we ended last year with a sizable one-time general fund balance of 48.9 million and as always, we utilized some of those monies to fully fund the city's formal reserves and compensated absences reserves and that left us with a starting balance of $44.6 million on July 1. Adding to that is the use of 1.4 million in one-time resources to fund one-time expenses. In addition to another 5.2 million in projected budget savings we anticipate for the current fiscal year. From those resources, we funded 4.4 million in one-time budget items, a $1.2 million ramp-up contribution for our ERP project and a $5.9 million general fund additional discretionary payment to Calpers. Combining all those amounts, we are projecting an available non-recurring general balance at the end of the fiscal year of just under 39.8 million. So adding together that projected recurring deficit and our projected non-recurring balance from the previous two slides, we get a total projected general fund spendable balance of 38.2 million at the end of fiscal year 25-26. So now let's look at how these revised numbers impact our general fund five-year forecast. As mentioned previously, the city has a recurring deficit of 1.5 million in the current year. We expect to see that number increase to 3.9 million in fiscal year 26-27 and remain in a deficit situation through 2030 as we incorporate the impacts of MOUs with our labor groups, our rising pension payments and the general inflationary cost increases for goods and services. Overall, our expenses are projected to grow at an average of 4.6% over the next five years, while our projected average growth in revenue over that same time period is 3.7%. It is important to keep in mind that next year's projected deficit represents only about 1.5% of the general fund budget, so while it will take some effort, we feel confident in the city's ability to move those numbers in a more positive direction. Unfortunately, the city's cash balance is very strong with that projected available spendable balance shown at the bottom of 38 million, though without taking any action to address our future deficits, that cash balance will drop to under 7 million over the next five years. Of course, our staff has already sprung into action to start gathering and analyzing options to address our general fund deficit for the upcoming budget year. First and foremost, the best way to address a deficit is not to add to it. So you will see very few, if any, new budget requests from departments in the 26-27 budget. We're also examining further options to reduce expenses such as strategic departmental budget cuts, freezing vacant positions and working with our labor groups who represent three-quarters of our general fund expenses. On the flip side, we're also analyzing a variety of options for increased revenue, which we'll bring back for further discussion in 2026. We will also continue to recommend investing our one-time funds into items that will generate long-term recurring savings, such as our additional pension payments. And lastly, given our strong cash position, we have the luxury of being able to use one-time funds to bridge our deficit in the short term while we focus on implementing more long-term structural changes to our general fund budget. So you've heard me frequently use the analogy about Burbank being this very well-built ship prepared to weather any financial storm and that remains true today. This City Council, as well as past City Councils, have taken a variety of steps to ensure that the city's fiscal stability, including increasing our general fund formal reserves to 20, from 20 to 25%, paying down our pension liabilities and setting aside additional funds in our Section 115 trust to cover future pension expenses, adopting a cost recovery policy to ensure that our service fees remain in alignment with our cost of providing those services where appropriate. We've maintained our commitment to fund capital projects, reducing our infrastructure and maintenance backlog and improving the pavement condition of the city. And we continue to fully fund our internal service funds, ensuring that we have a dedicated funding source to replace needed equipment such as vehicles and technology, as well as covering the city's liability and insurance costs. And as an illustration of that, now is a great time to remind the council that in addition to our projected spendable general fund balance, we have fully funded our formal reserves, our compensated absences and our Section 115 pension trust in accordance with the City Council's financial policies. Altogether, the city has nearly 143 million in available unrestricted funds and reserves, representing about 55% of our recurring general fund budget. So to conclude our presentation, the current year budget has been revised to a deficit of 1.5 million, mostly due to that decline in our sales tax performance. And as a result, we're now projecting a deficit in the next five years of our financial forecast. But fortunately, we anticipate a general fund one-time spendable balance of 38 million at the end of the year, which will allow us the flexibility to bridge that recurring gap and invest in opportunities that will generate for future recurring savings and ease future deficits. Of course, there are always risks to our projections, so as always, staff will continue to monitor and update the forecast to account for impacts from the economy as well as any future legislative actions that could impact our budget. We'll be returning to the council next month to provide you with our fiscal year 24-25 Act for and then we'll be back in early March with a mid-year update, which will provide financial results through the end of December and give us another opportunity to make more adjustments to our current year revenues and appropriations as needed. And then in May of 2026, we'll be back for yet another budget season with a distribution and presentation of our 26-27 proposed budget and a scheduled adoption date of June 2. So with that, we recommend the City Council note and file tonight's report and we are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you, Ms. Becker for the presentation.
Thank you.
Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so let's move on to council questions. Councilmember, yes, Councilmember Rosati.
What's our current TOT rate?
It is 10%.
And when was that adjusted last?
I'm not sure I remember.
It's been a while, but we are below other cities.
That's why I'm asking the question.
And we're be looking at that.
Is it time to do analysis, maybe?
Oh, we are currently doing that and we'll be bringing something back to you at the start of the year.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilmember Anthony.
Just for clarification, surrounding areas, we're at 10%, what are they around?
I believe 12 is Pasadena and Glendale or higher.
Okay.
Councilmember Mullins, no? Okay, any comments or discussion?
I do want to say, I mentioned this to you, I attended a couple of weeks ago the county's assessment on their economic output, sorry, their forecast. We're doing better than most other cities in the area. Not great, everyone's suffering, but we seem to be doing okay comparatively, comparatively. So I am, I'm very proud for us that we are able to weather this storm, you know, across the country, everyone's talking about this, so I'm glad, I'm glad we are where we are.
Any other comments? Yeah, Councilmember Mullins?
Yeah, thank you for the report, presentation, very clear. I do, yes, we're not unique because there are a lot of other cities, the county, everyone is experiencing kind of the same theme because of sales tax and the drop in a little bit of property tax as well. It's a good reminder for us, obviously, because we're looking at five-years deficit. We've been lucky to have a surplus for a while. So I think it's, it's a good reminder for us and in staff, you talked about it, that we need to tighten our belts and we need to be very conservative in our expenditures and our wish list, if you will. I think I would really appreciate that staff to keep reminding us of this and I know you're going to come back to us and look at some options and ways to keep those numbers as low as possible, but I appreciate the fact that we need to be aware and then also limit our asks of staff and what we, maybe our projects or things that we want to do is to keep those numbers the way they are instead of going further out in deficit, so thank you for bringing this. Hopefully, it'll get better by the time you come back in June, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Becker, I had the lovely opportunity to listen to your presentation on YouTube. But no, thank you, I know it's tough during a deficit and I know, again, I think I said this during our budget process and I'll say it now, Burbank is the lovely A student in the group project where the rest of the members of the group aren't working with us. So I really appreciate everything you're doing despite what's coming down from the state and from the federal government. So thank you for everything you're doing to keep us afloat. I know we have a few things up our sleeves and I'll end it on a positive note and echo Councilor Anthony's sentiments. We are in a much better position than many of our neighbors and I think we sometimes take that for granted, so thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you.
All right, this is a note and file, so thank you.
Mayor, my shameless plug is can we make sure that you remind everybody to do their holiday shopping in Burbank?
Yes.
Thank you.
Come spend your well-earned dollars in the city of Burbank.
I actually did that today, I have a friend who's in New York saying he's spending money. I said, please don't bring it back here and spend it here in Burbank.
And come stay here during the holidays.
Yes. Alrighty, now we will hear council comments, including reporting on committee assignments, attendance at conferences, regional meetings and community events. Who would like to go first? Councilmember Anthony.
Yes, so I saw all of you at the Employee Appreciation Week Breakfast, that was really great, on Thursday, October 30. The following Thursday, I again saw all of you at the State of the City address. The food was great this year and the speech was even better. I have to say, I've never seen a mayor give a State of the City and make people cry in the audience, so that was cool.
For, for good reasons.
For good reasons. Oh yeah, it was very emotional, very emotional. The baby style, oh, it was wonderful, yeah, tears, tears, it was good. Tears of joy, tears of joy, yeah, yeah. No, they were, they were happy, they're happy about it, very emotional. The following Sunday, on the 9th, I went to the 4th grade Cub Scout Troop 201 and helped them work on one of their sign-offs, one of their merit badges for talking to public officials. talking to a public official, and they had some very funny questions. They asked me, how many presidents have I met? So that was fun. And then the Veterans Day ceremony was great, we had a little bit of cloud cover, so it was a nice weather, and yeah, it was really fun. And the flyover was always cool. My son always loves that part, man, that's so cool. Yeah, and that's it for me, thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Anthony. Who would like to go next? Councilwoman Rosati?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On Thursday, October thirtieth, I went to the Employee Appreciation Breakfast, which was a lot of fun. Saw a lot of people in their costumes. And then I went to the grand opening for the Santa Anita Play Lot, and that was a great refurbishment of that lot. And then on Wednesday, the fifth, I went to the EDI Awards in, at the Rose Bowl, which was really nice, spectacular event. I attended the State of the City luncheon where our mayor did a fabulous job. And Friday, the fourteenth, I went to the Saint Robert Bellman School Walkathon, which turned into a dance because it was raining hard, which they pulled it off great, it was a lot of fun. I attended that night the Matthew Pervilka put on the Burbank Police Foundation Remembrance. And then Saturday, the fifteenth, I went to Leadership Burbank's, what was it called? Streaking Simpan, whatever it was called, the Speakeasy, it was a lot of fun. It was at two different locations, and everybody was dressed in the nineteen twenties garb, which was great. And then lastly, that same night, I went to Enchanted Under the Bee, where they had the Back to the Future card, our mayor was there, we both had a lot of fun, going back in time, nineteen eighty-five. So, yeah, yeah, right, went from the eighties and went all the way to the thirties to stay one night, in one night.
Man, we're with the jokes today, love it. Thank you, Councilwoman Rosati. Vice Mayor Takashi.
All right, on the thirtieth, I went to the Employee Appreciation Week Breakfast, and my neighbor was Councilmember Rosati. We served pancakes and sausages, and that was awesome. And then later that day as well, attended with Councilmember Rosati, the Santa Anita Play Lot. For those who have little ones, who have not been to the Santa Anita Play Lot, it is a super-secret, awesome play lot that I wish I had known about when my kids were little, so highly recommend going. And then on the thirty-first, I attended the San Fernando Valley Cog Ad Hoc meeting, committee meeting about the Sepulveda Transit Corridor that Metro is planning to help get folks from the west side up into the valley on transit, so that's going to be way down the pipeline, but this is the early stages of planning for that. November sixth, I went to, attended the SCAG Energy and Environment Committee meeting, where I sent many emails to staff about ideas and thoughts, which I always do during those meetings. And then later that day, the State of the City address, where we heard an awesome speech, where people were crying, apparently. Tears of joy, tears of joy. Full house, full house, and every year it gets bigger and bigger. And kudos to staff for putting together the video. Is the video up now for viewing on the website? You just, yeah?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so that's, if you haven't watched it yet, that video is pretty cool. Every year they do, they top themselves from the year previous. And then yesterday, I attended the regular San Fernando Valley Cog Board Meeting, and then yesterday evening, attended the Sustainable Burbank Commission Meeting. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, on Wednesday, October twenty ninth, I attended the California LGBTQ Student Right Coalition Call statewide with legislators and future activists on, wow, somebody out there needs to slow down. On October twenty ninth, I also gave a tour of City Hall to our Boys and Girls Club Keystone Leadership Program kids. It was great, they asked so many questions. As always, they love your office with the Captain America's shield, yeah. And they had a great time visiting council chambers and learning about what we do here. They had a lot of great questions. And then on Thursday, October thirtieth, Employee Appreciation Breakfast with, with all of my colleagues, and I got to watch Courtney force-feed staff sausage, very much making sure they're all well-fed and they have their protein. Don't say leadership doesn't do things for you. On Saturday, November first, I had the honor of attending our library's first Dia de los Muertos celebration. It was very nice, they had mariachi, which was really nice, they played really well, and the crowd really enjoyed it, it was really nice watching parents teach their little ones about different cultures, and they had an ofrenda with not real food, it was a crafts, but it was a great event, it was very well-attended, and looking forward to more in the future. And if you go to any of our library events, you can catch Eric Lashley at the table getting info for our library project proposal, so that's very nice. On November third, I had a meeting with Governor Newsom's staff regarding the Film Commission and, you know, Burbank is doing in that realm. And then on Wednesday, November fifth, I had a meeting of the Burbank Glendale-Pacadena Regional Housing Trust, where we talked a little bit more about Measure A. Stay tuned for those funds. And then I also attended the LAEDC's Eddie Awards in our Rose Bowl, it was a very nice event. It was rigged because we did not win. No, we were, we were very gracious, gracious losers. No, we behaved, we behaved, we behaved, and economic development knows their turn is coming up, they're doing great work. And then on Thursday, November sixth, the State of the City, thank you all for the kind words, when you said I made people cry, I was like, was it that bad? No, but I did say, I did, that was probably the most emotional speech I've ever given in my life, and I've never cried in front, you all know me, I don't cry in front of people. That was the first time I think I cried in front of people, and it was when I mentioned Blake, so that's when I started crying. And then I saw you, and you actually were like a little misty-eyed, and I was like, oh, no, look away. And so the waterworks kept coming, but thank you all for, for being there to support, and thank you for all you do to, to make sure we, we all do good, good work out there. And before I start crying again, I'm going to keep going. November eleventh, Veterans Day, that was a great event too, and yes, thank you to the sponsors who made sure the Veterans Day Committee got a wonderful flyover like they deserve. And on Friday, November fourteenth, I also went to the Walkathon, it was a great event, and the students at Saint Robert Bellman School did a great job, they were really sweet. Saturday, November fifteenth, I went to the Enchantment Under the Bee, yes, I was dressed like Marty McFly, yes, I pulled clothes from my mom's closet. And on November sixteenth, I went to the Costa Rica Day Celebration here at the Argentinian Association on Glen Oaks. They do it every year, if you haven't had a chance to go by, they always ask for the mayor, so they rotate, yes, they asked for you, because they still remember two years ago. So it's a, really a great event, and they appreciate the city of Burbank hosting them every year.
You came with me two years ago to translate those.
Yes, I did. And if anybody wants me to go again next year to translate, happy to do that. And then on Tuesday, November eighteenth, oh, that's today, I attended at eight in the morning our BWP Key Accounts Meeting and to welcome and let our key account holders, those with our large commercial accounts, know that we are here to serve and that we want to work with them as costs go up, as rates go up, we want them to know we're going to work with them, and that we have the most reliable rates in the region. And then at eleven AM, I did the APPA Policymakers Council Call, so a very BWP day for me, and now I'm here with all of you. All right. Councilmember Mullins?
Got it. I'll make it quick, attended a whole bunch of the events like you did. October thirtieth, I met with Lori and Mary Alverd, talk about FSA, and then the same day, attended a Roya Verdugo meeting in Pasadena, then attended the Eddie Award with Councilmember Rosati and the mayor, it was a lot of fun, I had a great time, and staff, everybody was there, we had a good time. State of the City, I clapped, I was happy, I didn't cry. And then on, yesterday, I met with representatives from Unite here regarding our policies and the media district that we discussed today, so I made, I went through her all, so we can finish.
Yay, okay. That was everybody, right? Okay. I always miss you, which is why I'm like, that was everybody. Okay, now is the time for the introduction of additional agenda items. Do members of the council have any additional items to introduce? Councilwoman Mullins, and then I'll go to, oh, oh, Councilwoman Mullins.
Oh, yeah, who's, oh, I did, so it could be a memo, and it's regarding the landscape removal and shrub over in the Rancho area, if we can just get an update on perhaps, can we look at replacement of our area, or can we work with the other team to see if there's a way that we can do some kind of replacement for some of these shrubs? So if you can send us a memo, it doesn't have to be a full report.
Sounds good, we'll provide an informational memo, and again, we'll follow up with whatever was provided and see what we could do. Again, I don't want to set the expectations too high just because only a small portion is, is under in Burbank, so, but.
But I think just enough to help us answer questions or know what we can do. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, I have a request for a memo regarding community events and that process, how we help people make, have community events, and specifically around the insurance requirements. We've had a few folks reach out to us about the difficulties of insurance, so if we could get that information, that'd be great, and a memo in the webber.
Sure, we'll give you a memo, I know we've been working on that to try to consolidate it to a special permits event type of application that's streamlined and consistent with everybody, so we'll, we can get that memo to you.
Anything else? Seeing none, we now adjourn the meeting to Tuesday, November twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, for a regular city council meeting in the council chamber, two seven five East Olive Avenue, second floor. Thank you, Burbank, and good night.